All righty, here to kick off the 5:00 PM work session for our legislative agenda. Take it away, city manager.
Thank you for that. Welcome, council members. Nice to see you all. I just wanted to give just an introduction to, most of you know our lobbyist, Devor Jurassic. He'll say it the right way. I can spell it for you. But he's been the lobbyist since before I got here. I think he started in 19, so for about five years, he's been the lobbyist for Squim. He's been a contract lobbyist since 1990, so 34 years, and has, you know, great reputation around Olympia. I know that every time we go down, and several of you attended the legislative days, almost every legislature I meet with, our legislatures thank us for employing him because of their ability to work with him. So I just wanted to thank you for your relationship with them. But he's going to introduce you, his associate, his son tonight, and how it will go. We really have three things to fill these 45 minutes. One is, they wanted to update you on what this updated legislature looks like, the environment, and kind of do a 101. And we forwarded you that deck earlier today, so you can see that PowerPoint. But really, and that's important, but the two things after that is for Devor to talk to you about your policy objectives and your policy priorities that you would like him to address this coming session, as well as then, you've created your own policy ones, and Public Works and Administration have created our operational priorities for financial asks from the legislature, because that's where the money gets distributed. So those are the three things. A PowerPoint deck overview, and then a discussion regarding your policy priorities, and then Public Works' operation priorities. So with that done, Devor, please, go ahead.
Okay. Thank very much, Matt. It's nice to be here. And yes, time flies. I think I've been your lobbyist for five, five or six years, and I remember the first meeting we had in here with your legislators at 6:00, 7:00 o'clock at night. And it's been a good relationship ever, ever since. So appreciate that. I'm just, Matt kind of outlined what we're going to do today in the 45 minutes. It's a lot, but feel free to interrupt at any time and ask questions. The 101 is to get you thinking. I'm sure all of you have a different level of knowledge or interaction with the legislature. Vicky's probably on one scale. Some of you are kind of in the middle, and maybe on the other scale of having interacted with the legislature. But what Connor and I have found out is that doing a 101 kind of gives everyone the same information, and then it allows you to start talking about your issues, or food for thought, or, you know, get ahold of us a couple of days from now. So we'll do the 101, and then I'll just do a quick snapshot. I will do the 101, and then just, or Connor will do the 101, then I'll just do a quick snapshot of things I see happening this session, then we'll talk about the issues. So, thanks.
All right. Hello, my name is Connor Jurassic, and I'll be doing the ledge 101 presentation. So legislature, you have the House and Senate. The House is made up of 98 members. They serve two-year terms, up for reelection every two years. Senate has half the amount of members, 49. They serve four-year terms, and half of them are up for reelection every two years. This kind of shows a timeline of the House, the Senate, and the Governor, and how many times they've been Democrat first Republican. For the past seven or so years, you've had a Democratic governor, a majority Democrat in the Senate, and a majority Democrat in the House. So there's basically a Democratic trifecta, and it essentially means that the Democrats have an easier time passing their priorities during the session. You can look in the past when it's been Republican. Also, in the House, it's been a split during 99 to 2001. This also shows last year, 2023 to 2024, how many Democrats were in, how many Democrats were in the House and Senate. As you can see, majority were Democrats. Then you have the map of Washington State and the 49 legislative districts. Each district has one senator, two House reps, and basically the districts are redistributed based on population every 10 years. For the city of Squim, we're in the 24th legislative district. Our three current legislatures are Representative Theringer, Representative Mike Chapman, and Senator Kevin Bandaway. You have a unique situation here, where all three of them are chairs of legislative committees. Theringer's the chair of the House Capitol Budget. Then you have Mike Chapman, Natural Resources Committee Chair. Same with Senator Kevin Bandaway, Natural Resource Committee Chair. So they have a lot of power in, when legislation gets passed through their committees, they have more influence on how bills, which bills can basically get through a committee or could not get through a committee. So what does a legislator do? Three of the main things they do is, one, they represent their districts for policies that benefit them. They can create, enact, and amend law, state laws, and then they represent their districts in the state budgets. This is done through the legislative process, which is a two-year cycle, also known as a biennium. The first year is a long session, 105 days, always starts on the second Monday of January, is on odd years, and the primary focus is passing the transportation, operating, and Capitol budgets. Think in terms of billions, because it's funding for the coming biennium. And then second year, you have a shorter session. It's only 60 days. Still, the objective is to pass the three budgets, but essentially they're supplementing last year's budgets and legislation that was passed. So three budgets. You have the operating budget, transportation, capital. Operating budget is the largest of the three, and it mainly funds healthcare, social services, education. And then you have the transportation budget. It primarily funds roads, bridges, and ferries, public transportation. The city of Squim was appropriated about $30.5 million for the Simdar bypass for two bienniums. Then you have the capital budget. It funds public schools, a lot of public infrastructure, also parks. So the city of Squim was appropriated money in both 2023 and 2024 session to help with park development. So now I'll go over kind of the general process of the state budgets. The first step is state agencies throughout Washington, look at their kind of fiscal needs for the next two years, and then they send state agency requests to the Governor and the Office of Financial Management. The next step is the Governor and OFM, they kind of review the state agency requests. They also look at kind of the economic forecasts, and then other factors to determine what the Governor's three budgets are going to be, and then he creates those budgets. And state agencies have to submit their request by September, and then the Governor has to release the Governor's version of the three budgets by December 20th, prior to the start of the legislative session. So the next step is when the House and the Senate kind of come in and do their part. They review the Governor's budgets, both in the House and the Senate, and then, once the session starts on the second Monday of January, they hold public hearings, they review the budgets, and then ultimately, the House and the Senate each create their own version of the state budgets. And then later on in the session, both the House and the Senate work together to come up with one final version of the operating capital and transportation budget. And then one of the final steps is passing the budget and Governor approval. So the Governor gets the three budgets, just like you would see a bill passing through the legislature, goes to the Governor's office, and he has the option to sign the budget into law, do a veto of the entire budget, or do only vetoes for sections. And then if he does choose a veto, the legislature has the option to override that veto by getting a two-thirds majority vote in both, both the House and the Senate. And then if he does sign them into law, then they become law, and then they go from there. So that is the process for budgets. Now I can go into kind of how a bill is essentially from start to finish. So for one, for example, step one would be find an issue during interim. Example could be snowpack drought. The Olympic Mountains could have less snow than usual. And so, say the city of Squim wants to implement certain water conservation standards, and it may require a bill to get that done. So that could be an example. But then first, you want to ask yourself kind of a couple of questions. Does the solution to this issue actually require a bill? Maybe there was legislation passed in previous sessions that already focused on conserving water, but maybe you just need more funding to implement those things that were passed already. So you want to kind of do your research and that kind of thing. Then you also want to ask yourself, are other entities impacted by this issue? So with the Olympic Mountains, there's more cities than just the city of Squim. There could be multiple cities impacted, so you'd want to get with those cities and show that they have this, and essentially they'll be supporting you. And the more support you have, the more successful you could be during the legislative session. Then step two, you want to draft a bill. So a route that you could take is meeting with your local legislators. For example, Representative Mike Chapman, Senator Kevin Bandaway, they're both chairs of natural resources committees. So they are the key people that you want to go to, to say, hey, can you sponsor this bill? And help draft it so that it can be primed for the legislative session. This, all this work should also be done during interim, early on, because it takes a lot of time to develop your, whether it's policy or fiscal needs. And so having more time just sets you up better for success during the session. And then step three is trying to pass the bill. So the session starts second Monday of January. You have in this picture, two buildings. One on the left is the O'Brien Building, on the right is the Cherbourg Building, and that is where the House and the Senate gather and have most of their offices and conduct work. It also has hearing rooms where they have public hearings with their legislative committees to discuss issues. And then this is also an important time for lobbyists, because they're the ones that are ultimately on the, on the Capitol Hill, day in and day out during the session, trying to get your legislative priorities through the process to become law or to get the funding. So now we can go into legislative committees. This is a snapshot of the Senate Transportation Committee during last year's session. You have, at the top middle, you have the chair of the committee, Senator Marco Leas from Muckel TIO, and then you have his vice chairs on the right, and then on the left, you have ranking minority member Curtis King, and his assistant ranking member. Because these Democrats are a majority in the Senate, you have a Democratic chair in the Senate Committee. And then if we go to next slide, we have the same transportation committee, except it's in the House. So you have double the amount of members, because there's double the amount of House reps. We also have one of our local legislators, Mike Chapman, is in this committee. And then the chair is Democrat. You have Jake Fai from Tacoma area, his vice chairs, and then the ranking minority member, Andrew Barkus. So that is the transportation committee. So what do committees, actually, I think I missed this. So what can a legislative committee do? Three things that they can do. One is they can perform work sessions. This is done during interim, and it's a chance for people educated on an issue to educate them so that they can make better decisions during the legislative session. Then they can also do, perform public hearings. This is usually done during the session, and it's a chance for the public to testify either for and against legislation that has come into their committee, and then they can create, amend, and vote on legislation. So there are different types of legislative committees. You can categorize them into three different areas. You've got Policy, Fiscal, and the Rules Committee. Policy focuses on different issues throughout the state, whether it's agriculture, healthcare, public safety, technology. And then you have the Fiscal Committees in red. They are the ones that focus on developing the state budgets. And then in blue, you have the Rules Committee. Rules Committee is unique, because it doesn't have a specific policy that it focuses on. The primary purpose of the Rules Committee is to be the last committee a bill goes to before it can go to the House or Senate floor for a vote. And you could think of this committee as like a warehouse or a gatekeeper, and essentially it's where bills start to pile up, and then members within this committee are given the opportunity to pull a bill and send it to the House or Senate floor for a vote. So it's important to have, to know or have relationships with members in this committee, so that you can ensure that your bill gets out of that committee and further along through the process. This is kind of a diagram of where a bill goes, once it goes through each committee during the session. So for example, House Bill 1234, say it's on drought, it would first go to the Policy Committee in the House, which is the Agriculture and Natural Resource Committee. It would have a public hearing, and then it would get voted on, and if it passes, then it moves on to the next committee. It would go to the Fiscal Committee, only if there was a high enough fiscal impact. So if there's, if there's a lot of money required for this bill to go into effect, then the Fiscal Committee would review. Sometimes it would just bypass and go straight to the Rules Committee. So it goes to the Rules Committee. A member pulls that bill out, onto the floor, and it goes to a vote, and then if a majority vote, then it's passed. And then it has to go through the same process in the Senate. Something that Cam, that usually happens is, say, a member in the Senate Policy Committee wants to change the bill or add an amendment. So they propose the amendment, that committee votes on approving that amendment, and then it essentially goes through the Fiscal Committee, the Rules, and then the floor vote. But before it can, after it gets voted in the Senate floor, the House has to review the bill, because essentially, the Senate changed a bill that the House created in the first place. So they have to review those changes. So the final step is the Governor's office. So it made it pass the House and the Senate. The Governor essentially has three main options. You can either sign the bill into law, do a veto, or do nothing, and the bill passes. If he does choose to veto or partial veto, then the legislature has the option to override that veto with getting a two-thirds majority vote in the House and in the Senate. So this just shows kind of overview of last year's session. There are a total of 1,192 bills introduced. Only 373 were signed in by the Governor, and only six of those were partial vetoed.
Just a side note, it was 1,192 bills.
Oh, yeah, you got to come up here.
Just, just, I won't jump up. Just a side note, those 1,192 bills were introduced in a 60-day session. That's incredible how much volume there is. And you see in the end, you know, only a fraction of them actually pass, but all the work that the staff had to do, drafting those bills, the hearings, and things like that. So, a lot of bills.
Yes. Good. So now we can kind of switch our minds and think about how to achieve your legislative priorities during the session. So one key aspect is building relationships with your local legislators and other key stakeholders. This can be most effectively done, say, you have a legislative issue, or you need funding. It's important to get with your local legislators and invite them out, and show them your issue, or show you what's going on, so that they can have a kind of a memory, and something they can remember during the session. You also want to create a coalition behind an issue. So like with the snowpack drought, it's going to, it's not just affecting Squim, maybe it's affecting multiple cities, multiple entities. So the more people you have in support of your issue, the more likely it'll succeed during the session. And then you want to work on all these priorities during interim, because the more time you give yourself, the more prepared you will be before the session starts, and the more likely you will succeed in getting your legislative priorities. That is it. Thank you.
Devor, I trust you're going to answer questions or whatever. This was not meant to be a lecture, but to be a discussion. So now that you have that as a base, I guess you'll take it from here. Thank you.
So that, that's, yeah, are there any questions whatsoever? Yes?
This is an oversimplification, but last year, our legislators voted against landlords having to give a six-month notice to a renter to raise their rent, which would help the renter, and it doesn't seem like it would hurt the landlord. So why did they vote it
Simple answer is, there were more people that believed that was a bad idea than people believed it was a good idea. I'll, I'll tell you in a different way. When you have, so housing's a major issue, right? It's a major issue here, it's a major issue everywhere. The cost of housing, the availability of housing, the mobile home park issue, the landlord tenant issues. Those, there have been 22, 23 bills introduced in a very short period of time. So the legislature has to focus in on what can we actually achieve, and what do we have the vote for. So maybe if they narrowed down their scope, they could get more of what they wanted.
Thank you.
But, yeah. Yes.
Yeah, thanks, Connor, for that presentation. This, you know, probably goes back, I should have, didn't know this from high school social studies, but those, I guess whatever it was, 819 bills that didn't, you know, didn't get out of the Rules Committee. Did they just lay there until somebody picks them back up again, or did somebody have to start all over again next year?
Well, it's, yeah, it's interesting. And like I said, once, once you know, the process doesn't change, but I'll be talking about the change in the people, which is the next part of it. But the process is, so it's a two-year biennium. So if you actually introduced a bill in the first year, and it didn't pass, it's automatically eligible the second year to pick up wherever it left off and to carry forward. So sometimes, the bill will come in there, a housing bill, you know, rent control, or, or something to do with the process. The bill won't pass. Chair of the committee, Housing Committee, House Housing, will say that, you know, this is something we need to work on in the interim. Let's put a work group together, and let's delve into this issue, and then come back next year, and see if we have an agreed-upon bill, and then go forward. So you can do that in the first year. In the second year, the bills are introduced, and the second year die at the end of the session. So they, they have a two-year lifespan if they're introduced in the first year and don't pass. But what's interesting is, you know, legislators or people in leadership will, you know, it's political. So they might not have any intention of ever having that bill get out of the House, but they'll let it go through the Policy Committee, Fiscal Committee, and then they'll corral it in the Rules Committee, and say, well, you got to work on it more next year, you know, or it costs too much money, something of that nature. But the Rules Committee's an interesting dynamic, because they don't have public hearings. The Democrat, the majority party, which is the Democrats, are in charge. So it's all decided before they even have their meeting. You know, I would submit my list to you as the chair, say, I want to pull these two bills, and you go, ah, this one, okay, this one not. Try again, you know? And then when you have the, the meetings, they say, all right, I want this bill pulled, this bill pulled. And so there's very little debate, and there's no public hearing. It's, like Connor says, a warehouse, we're going to put all these bills here, and then leadership will decide which ones to bring out, and actually allow their caucus to vote on. So.
I had a quick question about timing. It feels like, I mean, granted, I'm not super close to the whole legislative process during the biennium, and so I kind of wait for people to send me, you know, this bill is being talked about, sign up for the public hearing, or, you know, public comment. So I'm curious to know, what is the timing? Like, how long is a public hearing announced typically until they have the public hearing? Does that question make sense?
No, absolutely.
Okay.
So, I, by, by the rules, and they vote on these rules, right? So there's always exception to the rules, or you can change the rule with the vote, or you can amend the rule with the vote. So in this case, I think by the legislators' rules, they have to give five days' notice before a public hearing. So five days. So in the old days, they used to come out once a week with the schedule, right? And they'd stick to the schedule. And if you wanted to change, they would have to plaster all these pieces of paper around campus saying, Representative Chapman's ag committee will not meet, or is taking this bill off, or we'll hear this bill. But now everything's electronic, right? So people are submitting their, chairs are submitting their schedules for the next week with placeholders, right? And so then when they get to the committee hearing, they can suspend the rules with a majority vote, and say, we're going to make this a 24-hour notification rather than a five-day notification. So that's knowing the process. And I found that, you know, I liked it a lot better when they came out with a weekly brochure of all the hearings, because now it'll come out on a Wednesday night, and by Thursday or Friday, it's all changed. It's crazy.
Devor, maybe you can also update. Number one is, you've been really good, and I think I forward, he forwards me his weekly lobbyist report, which I forward to you, or you're copied on. We also get it from the NOLA and whatnot. So you're constantly getting kind of inundated during the session with updates. But then when they do move something forward ahead electronically, and you can't change your plans to get down and participate in that, you can electronically as well. And, and I've seen that pretty effective. You might talk about that, but I think you can sign in, you can put that you're an elected official and where, and you can put your opinion, thumbs up, puns down, and put comments in there. So you, you can still participate, even though it's an accelerated process. So I don't know.
Yeah. COVID gave us electronic testimony from anywhere in the state. And so that is a, an option that is available to you. And you can sign up an hour prior, prior to the hearing. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. You can be anywhere, can testify. So. Any other questions on the 101, or on that? Okay. I know we're limited time, so let me give you just a quick snapshot into what, what I see happening this coming session. As I said, you know, the process remains the same. Once you know the process, it doesn't really change, although I'm still learning new things after 30, 30 years. Oh, I didn't know you could do that. And, but the people are changing all the time. So what you're going to see in this coming biennium, or this new, after November, you're going to see a lot of changes to the executive branch. So the Governor, Attorney General, you'll have a new Governor, a new Attorney General, Office of the Insurance Commissioner, and Commissioner of Public Lands. Those are statewide offices. The other ones, the same people are going to be in their seats. But after the primary, if you look at the primary numbers, you can ascertain that Bob Ferguson's probably going to be our governor. Nick Brown's probably going to be the Attorney General. Those are the two I'm going to wage guesses on. But that's looking at how many Democrats, how many Republicans voted in the primary, and looking at the numbers, and who's there and who's not. So, and who has name recognition.
A quick question about the change in leadership. I'm curious, you might not know, but I am curious if you have an inkling of how long it takes for people that are voted into acclimate to their new position, or to learn everything about it? Does it take a couple of years for them to feel comfortable in the position? Is it, are they super overwhelmed when they first start?
Well, it's interesting, you know, if you're talking about the Governor's race and the Attorney General's race, both these gentlemen, Nick Brown and Bob Ferguson, are politicians. So they've, they've, you know, Nick Brown was in the US Attorney's Office. He worked for Christian Gregoire. So when you get to those types of positions, you pretty much know, and you've been prepared, and you've been putting your staff together. You know, if you're like, who is going to take over for Mike Chapman's seat in this district in the 24th, which probably is going to be Adam, just looking at the numbers, you know, he'll have a heck of a lot less experience coming in than those other two gentlemen. So. gentlemen. So I can safely say, you know, I have a friend of mine that went to college with Bob Ferguson, and I joked, I said, you know, he's been running for Governor since he was in elementary school. He said, no, actually college, started talking about in college. So they've got their plans out there and they have their path. So, so you're going to see changes in the executive branch. In the House, in the Senate, you're going to see several changes due to retirements, people running for different offices, people being voted out of offices. You know, for example, in the 24th District here, it's kind of a microcosm. You know, you have your two House members and your one Senator, your House Member Representative Theringer, he won his primary by almost 60%. He's not going anywhere. He'll be Chair of the Capital Budget Committee again for two years. You have Mike Chapman, who's leaving his House seat and running for the Senate seat that Kevin Van DeWig's moving on from. Chapman got over 54% of the vote, so he'll probably be your State Senator. Then you have the open seat, which we just discussed, Chapman's open seat, where Adam Bernbaum got 27, and Matt Robinson got about 26%. So that's what's happening all over the state. You have people staying where they are. You have people running for higher office like Kevin Van DeWig and not making it. So he's gone. He's an open seat. And then you have people like Chapman moving from this seat to that seat. That's going on all over the state. So leadership in the House and the Senate pretty much will remain the same. As I said earlier, the Democrats will be in charge of the House and the Senate. I think their margins will increase. I think Republicans have, I think they'll lose a couple of seats. They will not pick up a couple of seats in some swing districts. Up in Whidbey Island, you have a Republican, Ron Mazzol, an incumbent Senator. He only got 48% of the vote. And that's not good when you're an incumbent. You need at least 50%. Down in the 17th, which is Vancouver area, that's a Republican district, but it's been changing quite a bit. So the Republican only got 50% of the vote. That's Paul Harris, a House Member, and Marla Kethiar got almost 49%. So that's changing there. So those are two seats that were Republican that could go to Democrats. And Democrats already have pretty much super majorities, so they don't need Republicans to get things passed. So. And then the overall, just two other real quick things. The overall leadership in the legislature will pretty much remain the same. Lori Jenkins will be the Speaker of the House. Drew Stokesbury will be the Minority Leader in the House. John Braun will be the Minority Leader in the Senate. The one thing that will change is Senate Majority Leader, Andy Billick from Spokane, Democrat, he's retiring. So you will have a different individual in charge of the Senate Democrats. So one, one thing, yes. Am I getting too much in the weeds about this stuff?
Just, just make sure you have time to talk about their priorities before, you know, that's, that's super important.
Right. Okay, that's next. Yes, go ahead.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I didn't turn my microphone on the first time. So I have a kind of process question or nuts and bolts question. So you are our City of Squim Advocate, or not, that's the wrong word.
Lobbyist.
Lobbyist, thank you. But so my question is, are you the lobbyist for other cities? And then how does your, your work dovetail with what the Association of Washington City lobbyists are doing?
Yeah, I do not represent any other cities. I do have other clients, but no other cities. And I, I work with the Association of Washington Cities, attending their weekly meetings during the session. I was just reading their email. They're trying to solidify their legislative agenda with their top four. So yeah, plenty of information from the Association, Association of Washington Cities. Just depends what you want to get involved in, right? Where do you want to focus? They've got a lot of issues and, you know, that would help, what we're going to talk about next, is directing me on policy, you know, where you want to spend your time and advocate for.
Thank you for clarifying, Devor. I really appreciate that.
Yeah. And just one last thing before we talk about the issues. There are going to be several initiatives on the ballot this coming November. We have not had an initiative on the ballot since prior to COVID. I think there'll be four. One of them is what a lot of people are looking at is the repeal of the Climate Commitment Act, which will, which generates billions of dollars in carbon credits. What's of interest to us for the transportation budget is that it generates, if the, if the CCA is repealed, that will whack out about $5 billion in revenue from the $16 billion new revenue transportation package. And that's where our $30 million is housed. It'll also affect the operating budget and the capital budget. But it takes a big hit on the transportation budget. So that's one thing.
When you refer to the 30 million, you're talking about our SMDARs exchange. Yes. So, yeah. And the other thing I can't, and you've already, and I know we're short on time, but it was stated, but quickly, there's three people that have control over these billions of dollars in the state budget. One of them is the House Chair of the Budget Committee, which is Steve Theringer, who is, used to live here. We, I saw, you know, we see him a lot. So he's one of three that affect billions of dollars. So that's, you know, it's an amazing opportunity that we have in this remote peninsula to have someone as powerful as that on the state level. So I just wanted to emphasize that.
Thank you. So you have put together, so we have our legislative policy and our legislative fiscal asks. So you have put together through your own work session, a list of issues that you have in front of you, the one-pager. And what, I don't know, do you want me to go through these? You, you know these. What, what I'm looking, I think what we need is, who is the point person on each of these issues? So if I have a question about funding for schools and capital projects, who do I go to? Because I'm, I'm going to need more information on each of these. And so I want to follow up with, with you or the appropriate person to say, I need more information. Is there, Connor was talking about coalitions. Are there other groups, school groups? Are there other cities attached with these issues? So I'm, I'm going to have to learn more, too. I mean, I grasp the issues. I understand, stand the issues, but I need the dynamics behind them.
Right. I guess I can just go down the list if you are interested. The school capital projects, as you might remember, we're very interested in the CTE building for the Squim School District, but they're also really struggling with their infrastructure. And so I'm betting the point person for that would be the Superintendent Reagan Nichols.
I mean, who here is the point person?
Probably Matt, City Manager.
Well, yes, and I'm happy to do that. But I think he's looking for a elected official to be a representative. Is that right? We talk all the time, and particularly on the ops side, but I, I am close to Reagan and to CTE, but I think he's looking for a council point person.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So I can, I can call you and say, all right.
Yeah.
Here are my questions.
Yeah.
You know, before I go out in the world and.
I could be point person for that unless somebody is really passionate about it. I could be your point person for that.
I also need to say something about the schools. And this is in every state. Why do we finance schools with property tax? It just, why can't the state just give schools more money? I mean, nobody's going to want to move to Squim if the schools go downhill. It's a, it's a symbiotic relationship. We need to have a good, safe, clean city with city services, and we need to have a good school system. It doesn't make sense why we finance it with property tax.
Yeah.
It seems almost unconstitutional. So you'll get on that right away, right?
I think we have to talk to, maybe not as far back as the founding fathers, but we have to figure out who came up those tax preferences.
All right. Affordable housing legislation, does anybody want to be point person for that? Kathy, okay?
Just to clarify, what I'm assuming is that we're assigning up a point person. We're not necessarily going to be the subject matter experts on it. So we'll just be.
Correct.
We'll hear from, from you and then find out who needs to answer that particular question. Okay.
Yeah, I just need to have a conversation and some backstory. So I can, when I'm talking to legislators, you know, I'm, I'm putting forward the message that you want and why. So.
All right. The CTE program funding, I could also be the point person for that unless, since they're related. Okay. The AWC and NOLA, I'm kind of wondering if Brandon would want to be the point person for that, but he's not here this evening. So we can volunteer him. Excellent. Brandon will be your point person for that.
That's my number.
Excellent.
Don't call him tonight, though.
Yeah. Oh, really?
More accurately, his wife is having a baby.
Is this the same Brandon?
Brandon's cheering her on, I'm sure. I'll be happy to do the infrastructure one.
Are you? Okay, okay, great.
I'll point on infrastructure.
And Dan will be your go-to for that?
Okay, great. Yeah, because you need to get some skin in the game, too, to help me. But yeah, so that's good. Okay. And then I think you are familiar with this sheet, the three projects we now have that we're going to be focusing in on. You may ask, you know, why is SMDARs there? We got our earmark, they don't do earmarks. We have our line item for $30 million. I'm getting back to Initiative 2117. If that passes, there, there will be legislators and Washdot that try to rearrange the project lists based on, hey, we just started digging out here. There's a hole in the street. SMDARs haven't even broken ground yet. We have to prioritize this versus that. And we have to remind them those 500 signatures from our constituents of everything we've done, of our coalition with the county, the tribe, the city, and put the pressure on them. So that's why I have that on there. So we don't think, I've learned that especially with transportation projects, if they haven't broken ground, the money's up for grabs.
And, and that list is what, 30 long? Wasn't that a list of 30 that went into that, that bill, or they projected out that we moved up on?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
It's, it's a list of 30 projects around the state that everybody's vying to get on top of that, knowing that if you're not in the top five or whatever, you're going to probably be rearranged and never see that funding come through. So.
Yeah, they have their, their large projects like the Columbia Crossing, the Squali Bridge. They've got, they call them mega projects. So those are the ones sucking up all the money, billions and billions of dollars on the I-5 corridor. So, but we've got good legislators that fought for this money. We have Representative Jake Fai, who's Chair of the House Transportation Committee that grew up here. There's a Fai Road just down the road, just down the way. So that's a good one. So we have to remind them. So then the next two, fueling station, you can see we're going to look for a request of $1 million. And then the West Squim Bay Sewer, we're going to ask for 7.5. And if, if you remember last interim, we did a tour of the West Squim Bay, and also then it was the shop, which included the fuel station. So we're breaking it out this time. So those are the three we're looking at. Matt and I are going to have an informal cup of coffee with Representative Theringer on Wednesday.
Wednesday this weekend.
In his hometown coffee shop and say, this is what we're thinking. Give us some feedback, you know? And I'm thinking, this is his last time as Chair. You know, I think he's only going to be here one more term. So what does he want? And what, what can he do for us?
He's, he's the one that suggested that we break out the Public Works Campus or that big project, which was, you know, 30-plus million dollars. And he said, you really need to break it up into different pieces. And of course, the fuel and station is probably the most important because of the emergency component, and we'll get buildings and other things eventually. But that was based on his recommendation, and so we think that's smart. We also, he also wants to see that we've asked for grants from a series. So he's really coached us on this. So I think that's a good one. And then, and we've reduced the list really to two. SMDARs is just keeping it front and center, really no ass there. Just don't give our money away to somebody else. But really just those two. And that's again, what Devor has heard from them and what I have heard from Devor and them. We really like working with Squim because you guys keep the same thing in front of us and we understand it. We've been on your bus. We've been to your tours. We know your community. And you don't change the deck every time we talk to you. So that's a lot of the strategy that we have put into the operation side of things. So.
Yeah, most definitely. And I had mentioned earlier, I think it was 2019, when I first came out here and met the council and some of the staff, and you, you presented your legislative agenda to your three legislators, and I think it was like five, six pages long. And you were going through each of them, and you said, well, what do you think? And they all kind of looked at each other going, it's a lot of stuff here, you know? And afterwards, they took me aside, and they said, boil it down to one page. If you really want something, tell us what you really want. Don't give me a phone book. Just focus in on the projects and state the case why you need them, and then we'll help you. But don't come to us with a laundry list. So.
A quick time check. We have a couple of minutes left. Is there anything else that you need from us?
No, other than to say that time flies, and I've enjoyed my time so far with you, and I want to build some more projects out there, and definitely do the groundbreaking on SMDARs. So that'd be a good one. But yeah, thank you for your time, and I'll be in touch.
Thank you so much. Any closing, final questions from council? All right. Thank you so much, Devor.
Thank you. Yes.
All right. We are here for the September 9 regular session at 6:00 PM, and I will call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, City Clerk, if you could please do roll call. Counselor Kathy Downer.
Here.
Counselor Dan Butler.
Here.
Counselor Vicki Lowe.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Rachel Anderson.
Present.
Mayor Brandon Janice.
Absent.
Counselor Harmony Rutter.
Here.
Counselor Nicole Hartman.
Here.
Could I get a motion to excuse Mayor Janice?
Second.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And by unanimous vote, is there anybody that does not approve? All right. He has been excused. All right. Sorry if I paused. I tried to give City Clerk a little bit of time to write things down. Thank you. All right. Moving on, could I get a motion to approve the final agenda, please? Or is there anything anybody wants to change around? Nothing? All right. Could I get a motion to approve the final agenda?
I move we approve the final agenda.
Thank you. In a second.
Second it.
Excellent. And by unanimous, is there anybody that does not approve? All right. The final agenda has been approved. Nothing on ceremonial today, so we will move on to public comment. This is a limited public forum. Individuals providing public comment must not disrupt or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. This is not a forum for hate speech. The City of Squim supports the public's First Amendment right to free speech, but it does not support hate speech. Speakers are expected to be courteous and refrain from making hateful comments, sounds, or remarks. Any offensive words and conduct shared by the Any offensive words and conduct shared by the public do not reflect the city's values. The City of Squim stands firm in its commitment to being an inclusive community and rejects discrimination of any kind. All right. The Squim City Council has implemented a new procedure for remote public comments during city council meetings. All community members who wish to participate in remote public comment via Zoom or by phone are required to register on the city's website by 3 o'clock PM on the day of the meeting. The new registration process is designed to streamline and enhance the public comment experience for everyone involved. For individuals attending in person, please take a moment to silence your cell phones. I will collect the sign-in sheet. If you would like to make a comment, please sign up. Each person will have three minutes to speak on any topic, and there will be a timer visible on the screen. A total of 30 minutes will be permitted for public comments. Please state your name if you are representing an organization and your city of residence. And no one has signed up for a public comment. All right. Thank you so much. Moving on to the public hearing. Regarding plat extensions. Before we open the public hearing, the clerk will read the comment instructions. Again, the Squim City Council has implemented a new procedure for remote public comment during city council meetings. All community members who wish to participate in remote public comment via Zoom or by phone are required to register on the city's website by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting. The new registration process is designed to streamline and enhance the public comment experience for everyone involved. Soon, the mayor will open the public hearing and take comments. If you are in person and would like to provide public comment, please sign in on the public hearing sign-in sheet. In-person public comments will be alternated with confirmed registered remote comments. And no one has signed up remotely to provide comment tonight. And no one has signed up to provide in-person comment this evening. All righty. The subject of this public hearing is the permanent code adoption, addressing the cleanup of code on timeline standards for plat extension in Squim Municipal Code 17.20.080 and 20.01A.030. The public hearing is now open. Does the city manager or staff have testimony to present?
Good evening, Council. Lindsay Zamel, Community and Economic Development Director. Tonight, we are here to finalize the interim control ordinance for plat extensions. As you are familiar with, as passed during the interim measures, there was conflicting code identified and housekeeping amendments needed to clarify and clean up the standards. New plats that come through the process at the beginning of the interim standards or now will be required to have a one-year extension only, not two one-year extensions as previously allowed in differing sections of the code. This code amendment was sent to the State Department of Commerce for the required 60-day notice of intent on July 1. And a SEPA determination of nonsignificance was issued on August 7. City Council first heard the ordinance at their April 12 meeting. Based upon the testimony this evening, council has been presented with an option to complete second reading of the ordinance with passage this evening if they like. That concludes staff.
Are there any questions from council? Not seeing any. Pretty straightforward. I really appreciate that. All right. We will now move on to public comment. Even though we don't have any, I feel like it's good policy to, you know, continue. All right. This is a public hearing. All audience members wishing to make comment will be allotted three minutes to speak. When it's your turn to speak, please give your name and whether you reside within the city limits of Squim. Please avoid repetitious comments, personal attacks, or comments not related to the subject before the council. The City of Squim supports the public's First Amendment right to free speech, but it does not support the use of hate speech or offensive language. Any offensive words and conduct shared by the public do not reflect the city's values. Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak?
We do not.
All right. I will now close the public comment portion of the hearing. Is there any council discussion? Going once? Going twice? All right. The public hearing is now closed. We will move on to council action. Is anybody prepared to make a motion?
Thank you, Rachel. As you stated, this is again, very straightforward, so I'd be happy to do this. I move to approve ordinance 2024 dash yet to be named as presented.
I second that motion.
And just for clarification, in the packet, there is a recommended action for a public hearing, but this is that public hearing. Okay. I just wanted to make it very clear. Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Could you please take a roll vote, please? Counselor Downer.
Yes.
Counselor Butler.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Janice. Counselor Rutter.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Yes.
Motion passed 6-0. All right. Thank you so much. And we will now move on to the consent agenda. City Clerk, could you please read the consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda is made up of claim vouchers totaling $1,785,443.3. The city council meeting minutes from the August 12, 2024 meeting. Adoption of the new Squim Municipal Code, SMC Chapter 20.20. Repeal of SMC Chapter 13.98. Development reimbursement agreements. The Squim City Bans Authorization for Certain Rentals at the James Center for the Performing Arts, a resolution. Authorization for Signature of Commerce Agreement for Park Acquisition Funding. Requests to waive competitive bidding process and authorized used dump truck purchase, a resolution. Purchase of medium-duty truck for Public Works Department, a resolution. General Sewer Plan Update, a contract. On-call Construction Management Services, a contract. And On-call Traffic Engineering Services, a contract.
Thank you so much. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second that.
All righty. And by unanimous vote, is there anybody who does not approve the consent agenda? All right. Approved. Moving on to general business. Q3 2024 Budget Amendment and Ordinance Authorizing Unforeseen Expenditures for 2024.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council Members. Sue Hagen, our Administrative Services Director. Tonight is the first touch on our Q3 2024 Budget Amendment items. All of these items have come before council in one form or another in the past, most recently at the August 12 discussion of our second quarter financials. Does anybody have any questions about the materials? As we've discussed before, our WCI, or Washington Cities Insurance Authority, payments, we've talked in great detail about how that exceeded our appropriations for this year, and it impacts the general fund and water and sewer. So we're making accommodations for that. We've had some professional services contracts that were needed to accommodate activities when we were not fully staffed. We're creating a new fund for development called the Development Reserve, which we've discussed before to help take the volatility out of the general fund. We are moving unused budget funding and budget appropriations from prior years to accommodate the North Squim Avenue construction projects, as well as to accommodate purchases that were budgeted in prior years, like the back truck. They were purchased in prior years, they were budgeted in prior years, but they just, they all started coming in this year, so we've got to pay those bills. So those appropriations are there to accommodate that. Other than that, we're asking that council waive the second touch rule and move to a public hearing at the next meeting. And again, I welcome any comments, questions, or concerns.
Any questions from council?
I move to waive the second touch and direct the staff to schedule a public hearing on this matter for the next meeting.
And I will second that. Could we get a roll call vote, please? Counselor Downer.
Yes.
Counselor Butler.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Rutter.
Yes.
And Counselor Hartman.
Yes.
Motion passed 6-0.
Thank you so much, council. We'll see you next time.
Thank you, Sue. Moving on to Swisher Hall fees, SMC 3.68, first touch.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Anderson, Member of City Council. For the record, Paul Busch, Public Works Director here at the City of Squim. First off, I want to apologize because there was a mistake on the recommendations, because it says that we're recommending there be a public hearing, which is required, but then the box got checked saying that no public hearing is required. And it also forgot to mention that we would request that we waive the second touch on this because it's a very simple issue for us. As you know, we've been working with on this topic of how do we charge for rates on the new Swisher Hall? Who's going to pay what and who's going to manage it? Earlier this evening, on consent, you authorized us to use the Squim City Band as our agent for collecting fees, which we'll be going forward with and developing a contract with them. What tonight, this topic is about is actually establishing the rates. So previously, when rates were brought before the council, there was some concerns that their rates were set too high, and they were set in four-hour blocks. So we took that to heart, and we took a look at what other entities around us, public and private, are charging as far as the hourly rates that they charge and what amenities they have. Unfortunately, Swisher Hall is a big open room with no amenities, and they don't even have chairs. So what we established was a fair and reasonable rate would be, as you see in Exhibit A, the, turn to the right page. Thank you. On an hourly rate for the city residents would be $10 an hour, non-residents would be $20 an hour. Nonprofits in the city would be $5 an hour. Nonprofits out of the city would be $10 an hour, and for commercial, it'd be $50 an hour. The damage deposit is planned for $200 that they would get returned, and we will be working with the band to figure out what form that damage deposit would come forward. I think the simplest thing is let's write them a check and then hand back the check at the end of their hour as soon as someone walks through and make sure everything is still copacetic. Similar for the cleaning deposit. For other facilities, it's a non-refundable cleaning deposit, but we've kind of felt that that might be a little bit too much because that really takes our $10 per hour and makes it $35 an hour. So we're going to have a $25 clean deposit that, and it is refundable, similar thing. You either give us $25 in cash or in a check, and by we, I mean the band. And then they'll go through and make sure everything's picked up, cleaned up, sorted. And if they make a mess, well, they don't get their money back on that one. So that's what we're proposing right now. It's pretty straightforward. We think it's a reasonable approach, considering the amenities that the facility has and does not have, in fact. I'm here to answer any questions you may have about this.
Anybody have any questions? All right.
Just a comment to say thank you for listening to the concerns that were presented at that public hearing and go back and refigure.
Yeah, certainly. So one modification on the staff recommendation is to waive the second touch and go straight to a public hearing, if I may. Thank you.
I move to waive the second touch, direct staff to schedule a public hearing on the matter in the next regular meeting.
I second that.
And can we take a roll call vote, please? Counselor Downer.
Yes.
Counselor Butler.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Rutter.
Yes.
And Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passed 6-0. Thank you so much. And Paul, you're still up for our next agenda item, West Squim Bay Road and North Rutherford Road update. I've been really looking forward to this, so thank you so much.
You're welcome. I'm pleased to say that we've completed all of our work in evaluating what's going on with North Rutherford Road and West Squim Bay. In your packet tonight, there's a background analysis and discussion. And rather than go through all the different items that we told you we're going to look at, you can read those if you would like, or I can go through them, but we've completed them all. And so the good news is we've accomplished the evaluation that we needed to do. We have determined that it was appropriate to keep the 20 mile an hour speed limit zone out there by the school, daycare school, early learning center. It was also appropriate to stripe no passing on both east and westbound. Previously, it was just westbound. We have completed the striping as a no passing zone going eastbound also. The interesting thing I wanted to share with you is that our speed study was very revealing. It showed that both residents of Squim and those who live outside of Squim have lead feet. They exceed the speed limit quite a bit, startling so, in fact. We had three different locations. We were measuring speed eastbound and westbound. We found that on average, I would expect there would be a couple of cars driving over five miles an hour over the speed limit. We have a significant number of them who are going over that, including one, which I pointed out, turned out to be a motorcycle around 1:00 in the morning consistently, doing between 75 and 85 miles an hour coming into the city and then gradually slowing down, but not by a lot by the time to go past school. Now, nobody's in school, nobody's up at that time of the night, but still, that's not good. We, I reached out to the police chief and asked if they do some enforcement out there now that we knew what was going on. And as of, I think it was Thursday of last week, Wednesday of last week, they had made 25 traffic stops to remind people, I don't think they were giving tickets at this time, but to remind people that there is, in fact, a speed limit of 35 miles an hour outside of the school zone. In addition to that, I've directed staff to order the necessary signage to correct the problems that identified when we went out there in the first look through there. So you'll start seeing 20 mile an hour speed limit signs in the appropriate locations, warning, advanced warning signs also that go along with that. So that work will be accomplished as soon as we get the signs coming in. One of the other things I asked for was an accident history, because that plays into the decision whether 35 miles an hour is appropriate or not if we had a high incidence of accidents. We got it from the state from 2013 to 2024. There have been a total of 23 accidents, four of those because of the long corridor we looked at, four of those are actually in the county, so we're down to 19. The vast majority of those are actually at Washington and West Squim Bay Road. We have a fair number of them right there. Right there in proximity to Rutherford Road over the last 11 years, there have been two, one at the intersection when a driver failed to yield right away, and then one further to the east, a single car accident, distracted driver ran over a sign, signpost. Other than that, there were no other accidents. There was one further down distracted driver clipped a pedestrian. But I was looking for pedestrians, and I was, and that was quite a while, looking for pedestrians and looking for bicyclists, because we hear a lot of concerns that's unsafe to bicycle and to walk in there. And it is not an area that I would recommend my family and friends go for walks along the road going eastbound, because we have an irrigation ditch right off to the side there, and there's not a lot of room. So this is one of the areas we'll be looking in the future to see if we can find future funding from other agencies to help us build at least sidewalks on to help us build at least sidewalks on the north side, preferably both sides. And if we can get enough money, we would do bike lanes on both sides, sidewalks also. So with that, that is all the information I have to share with you tonight. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Please ask, ask questions.
It's not really a question, but I do live out that way. I had a neighbor that just sold their house about six months ago because of the racing noises at night. It was so loud. And it was a motorcycle. And I have myself, again, the week before last, I had a bicyclist go through the intersection of Roderfer and West Squim Bay Road. No eye contact. They didn't stop for the stop sign. They didn't turn their head right or left. They just sailed right through that intersection. And, and I know it's been five years, but that's probably the fourth time that that's happened to me.
Yeah.
And you hate to honk because you don't want them to startle and fall off their bike in front of your car.
I would recommend laying on the horn. You're not going to startle and they're going to fall off, but they'll learn their lesson. I'd much rather have them learn a lesson through that than getting hit.
Right.
You know, I mean, there's, there's only so much that we can do to warn people there's stop signs on both sides. When you're coming down Roderfer Road from Washington towards West Squim Bay Road, there is no dedicated bike lane. There is no dedicated path for the OTT. So cyclists need to be aware they are on the road. It's not like it's hidden. And, you know, unfortunately, accidents will happen when people are not paying attention. I hate to say that, but it's, it's the fact of the matter for them. And I wish that your neighbor had contacted us about the racing motorcyclist because the police have chased that individual twice. But because of the pursuit laws, they have not been able to complete the, their efforts. But they're not going to give up. And evidently, it's someone who goes through late at night and it's a bit of a hodgepodge motorcycle put together because they, pretty sure they saw it at Safeway. And it has no license plate. So sooner or later, this individual will be, have an encounter with our PD.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Carmen, did you have a question?
Um, yes. Just to follow up on what you brought up, Kathy, I really consider myself really lucky. I was exposed first to bicycling when I lived in Portland. And there in Portland, there's a, it's Portland, Oregon, not Portland, Maine. There's a culture of cycling there where there's a lot of engagement with the cycling community from, and it's a big city and there's lots of infrastructure. But there's kind of this mantra that as a cyclist, you are a vehicle and that you need to treat yourself as a vehicle. So use your hand signals, yield to the signs, be a vehicle and use the roadway. And it's definitely not like that out here. That's, I get so frustrated. But, you know, just when I see a cyclist, I like to give them extra space, especially, like we were driving, where was this? Somewhere in Squim. And on one, I don't remember which street it was on, but the bicyclist just, just like went across the lane, just right across the lane in front of us. And we were just like, there was no hand signal. There's just not, so I, I, yeah. It's, it's a pet peeve of mine. But anyway, I hope safety for all. The other thing I wanted to say is that is, in my understanding, at this point, before there will be advanced active transportation facilities on that road, we have to finish the underground work as a city first? Is that still, is that, am I understanding correctly the kind of order of operations on that?
I think it makes the most sense. You do your underground work before you go in and do your surface features. That doesn't mean that they can't go out as part of the same package and project. It just all has to be funded. Right now, we're working on a water extension and a sewer extension.
Right.
And we do not have funding for the surface improvements. And as has been related to the council before, finding those kinds of funds is a top priority for the department. But it's always a challenge because there are so many requests for services. We've got sidewalks everywhere we want to put in. We have the prairie corridor that we'd like to see expanded to be an alternative route. That's, that's many millions of dollars. So there's a lot of work and we're doing the best we can to find that work and target the areas that has the best value and benefit for the greater community.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate your, all of the work that you and your department do.
Thank you.
Nicole?
Just had a question about, is there a vehicle in place that you get the word out as far to the public, like a PSA or something in order to get word out about the changes or clarifications that the public knows this is coming up?
When we put up a new traffic sign, we put in the big orange flags to tell people. We're not really changing much out there. It's been 20 miles an hour on the westbound for some time. We're just putting in a complimentary one right across the street going eastbound because technically you hit the 20 mile an hour sign before Roderfer Road as you're coming down. What's been missing is the change from 20 to 35 complimentary right across so that you don't have conflicting speed zones right next to each other. So we're just, we're just doing some cleanup. But when we do put in a new sign, we put the flags on it so people know about it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much for the update, Paul.
Thank you.
All right. And moving on to the report section of our agenda. Malia, do you have a youth liaison report for us?
Hello? Yes, I do. Okay, for the purposes of the record, this is Malia Nelson, youth liaison. So as we know, schools have started, all Squim schools started on August 28th, which also means that fall sports have started, which started on the 26th. So if you were out at the football game on Friday, the Squim High School played Forks and we won, which is amazing. So you'll see other sports games start up and please support our Wolves. As far as the high school goes, we have a club fair this Friday. So you'll be seeing a lot more clubs out in the community like FFA and Interact and FBLA, I believe, does some community stuff. As far as leadership class goes, we're all busy with homecoming preparations. So the game is the 27th, if you want to come out and watch that. Coming up, the Interact Club, which is a service club we have at the high school, partnered with Rotary, we have a rally in the alley on October 12th, which is an event where community members can bring trash in the trunks of their cars and Interact members will help throw it away for them. And Leadership, the high school, and partnered with the food bank is doing Boo Hunger, which is our Halloween event. So community members will leave food items in their mailboxes and then we'll go around and pick them up. And that will all be donated to the food bank. And then coming up in November, the Boys and Girls Club has their annual auction. Another community notice is that the food bank is in need of volunteers. So on Saturday, those are the days that under, people under 18 can volunteer. And on Friday and Monday, adults can volunteer. So if you're interested in that, please let the food bank know.
Malia, I heard that there's a, some, I'm not sure what kind. I want to say a dedication event for the stadium. I thought I saw something about that. Does that sound familiar at all to you? Do you know when, when it might be?
I thought it was this month, so that's why I was asking you about it if I.
Yeah, I haven't heard about it, but I can look into it because we did just get a new track put in over the summer, so that might have been.
I think that's what it was.
Yeah. I can see if that's still something that's coming up.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
All righty, next up, our city manager report.
Thank you, deputy mayor and council members. It's been a while, so it's nice to catch up with you. I've had to condense three or four weeks of highlights to, to present a crisp city manager report. From my office, I wanted you to know that recently Chief Hill and Deputy Chief South, John Southward, Marin and I went over to the Serenity House and had another tour there. Sharon, I think her last name's Maggard, she's the executive director there. We, we went about a year and a half ago and I wanted to see if it was still how it was looking. Had an amazing tour. They keep continuing to process and prove it. I was, again, impressed with, it's not at capacity at all. They have bed capacity for individuals, for couples and for families. They still serve three meals a day, hot meals. They have medical attention there. They have free behavioral health. Two different companies coming in and serving people that way. They won't turn anybody away that's, you know, on drugs or drunk or whether they can't use in the facility. But, you know, they, they also have storage for their facility. So on and on, I could, I could keep going with some other services and resources they have. But it was just really encouraging, I guess, from a city manager standpoint. We have those, a lot of those beds are dedicated for Squimites or, you know, we're, that is, we're part of that initiative. We talked a lot about how would we, in a successful kind of user friendly way, get any of our homeless or troubled folks in, coming up this winter or anytime to that facility? You know, a lot of them don't want to get on buses. They have their own things as well. So that's been difficult. But we're looking at various vans that are available through some of the service organizations around that would be available for that. So in, in a lot of ways, we're really close. It's, it's a bit of a drive, you know, it'd take 15 minutes to get somebody there. But, but it is a really well-run organization and, and provides, you know, a lot of the basic health and housing needs there. So anyway, happy to have a conversation with any of you about that and/or to set up your own tour should you be interested. I also was asked by you all to meet with Ned Foyer, Foyer. He's the CTE kind of point person for the school district. I did that. We had a nice, over an hour conversation. Talked a lot about the traction he's, or the CTE initiative has gotten. He's also took the, kind of our conversation and met with Reagan. And so I'm meeting a follow-up meeting with her this Thursday to not just talk CTE, but other things. So that was very successful. They are moving forward. As you know, they got $5 million from the state. They got $1 million from a resident for naming rights. And they've got about $300,000 from the recompete that, that was recently provided to us through national grant of Derek Kilmer. So anyway, all that was really positive. I can, I can go into more details or answer questions should you have any on that. But my guess is they will be coming back and looking for some financial support, which Sue and I are trying to figure out. How do we put a, kind of a place card in the budget for that? Anyway, speaking of, of things in the community, I attended Thursday. There was a, kind of a christening experience down at PNL for their new, it's one of the first electric slash diesel research boats, all aluminum boat. One of the, one of the only ones in the country. They had a really nice event and, which I attended. I received an invitation to attend and I'm glad I did. A couple of the other visitors there were US Senator Marcia Cantwell, Derek Kilmer, US Congressman was there. Of course, Steve Thieringer was there, Washington State, from the Department of Energy, was the Director of Water Power Technologies, from the Chief of Staff from the Office of Undersecretary of Science and Innovation. These are all Washington DC folks. Also, the Associate Principal Deputy Assistant Secretary for the Office of Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy. So these folks had never been to Squim before. They all pronounced it correctly, so they got some good coaching that way. But it was a beautiful morning. It wasn't, you know, a ripple on the bay. It was blue skies, not a cloud overhead. And they all said, geez, we'll be back. Squim impressed them all. But it goes on. We had the Department of Energy, Pacific Northwest site and other folks from the state and from PNL. So that was a really nice kudos to Squim and the support that they feel from you all and from the city. We're, we're pretty close to them, or try to be. A couple other things I just wanted to also update you. I also have had ongoing conversations with Sean Omira, is that his last name? He is the faculty representative for the, the leadership team classroom at the high school. And he helps us recruit the student liaisons. So we have updated the guidelines. We've updated the application. We've created a flyer, et cetera, et cetera. And I believe a couple of you are going over tomorrow to, or very soon, tomorrow or the next day, to do some in-person recruiting into his leadership group. So all that will be happening soon. At least getting the application out. We'll see how many apply and then you guys can form a committee and start your screening process to fill the second position. So, okay, enough from me. From the communications, I'm kind of excited about this. I appreciate Barbara's willingness to move from a paper to an e-newsletter, our city newsletter. We've launched our first one in September. We started with employees and you guys were probably part of that, but finally moved it to the public. As of last Thursday, we had 59% open rate on that e-newsletter and 71% open rate from our utility, utility billing customer. So that was amazing because that open rate's usually 17 to 20%. So for the first month, really good, only six out of hundreds. I can't remember the exact number, only six unsubscribed. And we made sure that they knew they could and, you know, anyway, enough of that. Also, I want to thank Barbara. We're, we're always looking for things that would be helpful to the residents and to you to be able to give to your constituents. She's got a, a couple new fact sheets, one on annexation. We get asked a lot and it's a complicated process and not, not, but there's multiple mechanisms to have that happen. It would be hard for any of you to memorize that or to be able to articulate that. It's for any of us other than Lindsay, who knows this well. Anyway, we're creating a form for that. Another interesting one is, is called Squim City Limits or something like that. It shows our zip code and it shows our city boundary inside of that. And, and really, you know, what's in the city, what services do we do? What are the counties and how to contact either side? Because so many people, and of course, we have islands of county inside, in the middle of our jagged border. So anyway, hopefully that will be useful to you as we move forward. It's mostly just educational. It's not because there's an issue or anything. But thank you to Barb for doing that for us all. Okay, I'll move a little quicker from the DCD, from Lindsay and the DCD. You all asked that staff or really our building official prepare an ordinance to bring back to you regarding the termination of fireworks sale in the city limits. And that is being prepared for a first touch at your next meeting on the 23rd. So I think several of you have asked about the timing on that. So that will be at your next meeting. Also, you all asked me, I believe, have I heard of TIF as a way of potentially funding some infrastructure? I was impressed that you knew that acronym and we hadn't recently looked into that ourselves. Anyway, we are just beginning the process of looking into the reality of that opportunity. It's a state-run program. And so we just closed an agreement with really the state's premier TIF specialist, subject matter expert. He helped write the statute and has serviced 90% of the cities that have taken advantage of it, have, he, have used him to, you know, to do the analysis and whatnot. So we have our first meeting. We kicked off a meeting last week, just introductions. And then we will have a, actually start the process in the next week or two. But we did want to get him in front of you all so that you would know what it is. I don't want to get in ahead of you for any reason. And we don't know where it's going to go. It's really just an analysis. And so I've asked the, the mayor and deputy mayor in agenda planning meeting if we could have a work session, maybe have him take, take 30 or 40 minutes and explain to you what that is and why we would do it. And not knowing the outcome of the analysis, but at least not really getting very far in analysis before you have input and know what we're trying to do. So wanted to update you on that. you have input and know what we're trying to do. So wanted to update you on that. Uh-oh, my screen went blank. Come on, come. Okay. So wanted to update you on that. Comp Plan, Lindsay wanted to make sure that you all knew that September 17th, there's a, at the Guy Cole Building, there's a Comp Plan Workshop. Please encourage people, the title or the topic is Future Land Use Considerations for the upcoming Comp Plan. So we'll do, be doing a lot of social media, a lot of press releases and whatnot on that. But wanted to let you know that. And
When is that met? Sorry.
Guy Cole. It's the Tuesday, September 17th.
Seventeen.
Yeah. I forget. If, I'll, I'll look into it. I think it's a long, it's so, so residents can come. It might be an all-day thing. I'm trying to, trying to remember that. It's kind of like the workshops that you did before. So I think there'll be, you know, we'll be doing them, trying to get as much input as we can from residents. Yeah. And then she, Lindsay is re-initiating, as is her team, the developers' forms that we were having quarterly that kind of got dropped off with transitions and new staff and all that. So that will happen September, on Friday, September 20th. Not some of you have attended that in the past. It starts at 8:30. But always a good agenda where we communicate with the developer and construction folks in town. From HR, as long as I'm talking about DCD, they have closed on their recent opening for an associate planner. So now we have filled both those spots. And so I'm pretty much fully staffed and feeling really good about that. We also have backfilled EJ's position in the Parks Department and Events Department. And that person, Carrie, will start on the 23rd. So everybody's excited about some real, real experience in both those positions. And we are honing in on closing on, in from 30, what was it, six or 38 IT application manager applications to, we're getting down to two or three and moving into second and third interviews there. So hopefully by the next time we meet, we'll be able to make some introductions there. From the Police Department, I think I mentioned this already, but Officer Nicole Egan graduated from Police Academy and she's out in doing her ride-alongs and getting her promotion. I've seen her around at different traffic accidents, not speeding tickets, but, or personal ones. But she is out working. Going back to the conversation about West Quim Bay Road, the PD has worked very closely with the reports that are generated from the speed detectors and whatnot. And so we had really after it, hour by hour, you know, data. And they have chosen to do a lot of public, kind of community education out there. This is an older report, but I think as of a week and a half ago, they had made 24 stops over a 10-day period out there to educate them about the school and the traffic speed and some of the changes there. So thank them for that. That's a lot of work. And then I think you probably saw the press release about Kyle Reiser, who was, who was promoted to patrol sergeant, and Daniel Martinez, who is now taking over the school resource position there as the officer at the school. So that's big. Public Works, the Gearhart House Building will go on auction through a surplus authorization process. That's big. And then Yeah, I think I already mentioned this, but I'll do it again. Michael Mattson and Moses McDonald both earned their water distribution. Did I mention that last time? I thought I may have, as water distribution managers. That's a big deal. That's through the Washington Department of Health. It included 4,000 hours upon-the-job training and 300 classroom hours. And then they had to go to Spokane and take a day and a half test and whatnot. So that was, that was a big deal. And anyway, we've got some other technology that I was wanting to talk to you about, but I've talked plenty tonight. I'll save that for our next meeting. Any questions I can answer for you? I'm sorry for being so wordy tonight. Yes.
Very good report. Makes me proud to live in Squim. Does the school district understand about budget deadlines? I mean, you know, I mean, it's not that we don't want to do this for them, but Sue would probably like to know when.
Well, and that's why I think I'm going to be meeting with Superintendent Reagan this Thursday. You know, when is that ask? Is it going to come? Is it, is a pledge good enough for when they need it? Is it, is, you know, what's the deal? There is some interest in maybe a, and I probably shouldn't announce this, but they, they are going heavily, they're, they're investing heavily in their simulators, their driving simulators for, for commercial driving licenses. And, and they're actually getting multiple simulators that interact with each other. So one might be working a dump truck, you know, a, a front loader onto a dump truck and they, and they work together. Anyway, there could be possibilities. So to, for all of our Public Works folks that have to get a CDL, that's a month-long process, costs about $7,000, and we have to go to Everett for that. So this could be an opportunity to do something in conjunction with them and be local. There, there's, part of the recompete was that the CTE building would do a lot of their vocational training in combination with Peninsula College and that there would be collaboration in their degrees and in the progression of students and whatnot. So there's some opportunities there that might come back to, you know, facilitate our own staff if, should we be able to work something out. So, so yeah, I'm not sure how it's going to work, but the budget's in its final, you know, draft. But we'll, we'll see where that sits. I'll get more information on that. Thank you. Good question.
Thank you for your report. Harmony, you have a question?
I do. Off the top of your head, do you know how many people are currently subscribed to the digital newsletter?
So that was the number I didn't have for you. I just had the open rate.
That's okay.
So what we did, thanks to Legals' blessing, I had to twist some arms, but we, we have on our webpage, we have, you can sign up, notify me. And you can say, I want to know about council meetings, or Planning Commission, or Parks Meet. You can pick different things that you want. You can also say, I want the newsletter coming to me. In the old days, we would mail it to them. But we figured if they, if they clicked the, I want the newsletter, that meant we could also email it to them. So we, we had a small list of people that had signed up for that. But we also had all of the emails, or a lot of them through our utility billing, and through other notify me's that didn't really ask for the newsletter, but why not? So with Council's blessing and whatnot, we, we combined every email that we, list that we had across the city, putting a disclaimer up front, we're using this not only for this newsletter, but also for emergencies. You can, you can unsubscribe anytime you want. We're not forcing you. You have that option, that right. But we wanted to, you know, include you in this kind of launch, this electronic communication launch. And we will use it for future emergency notifications and whatnot. So anyway, so we have 33, who's around here that would know? We have, I think, is it 33 households for utility billing? When we switched to Tyler, we had about 1,200 of those were coming in electron, were paying electronically. When we switched, we actually grew. We thought we'd lose some. We went from 1,200 to 1,700. So we're getting closer to the 33. And I think we're going to put the campaign together to try to get them all electronic if we can. There's a lot of people that just don't know how to, my mother-in-law included. She doesn't have a smartphone, doesn't want one, doesn't know how to computer, doesn't want one. So there, we will, we will never get 100%. But we're, you know, trying to move it, the things that way as much as possible. So what's the answer? 1,700 in utility billing, several other hundreds that are, have signed up for notify me. I wish, well, let me see. Barb's listening. She's attending from home today. Let me see if she's
Oh, I don't need that exact number. You've given me a ballpark. There's no reason to get granular on this at this time.
Okay.
But just, I was just out of curiosity. So that's great. And I, constant contact, I think, is a great system to use. So thank you for moving that forward. Yeah, that was my question. Thanks.
I've also had some, I didn't keep listing the other meetings I've had, but I meet with Tim Dalton regularly every month. And we just had a really productive meeting last week on Thursday, Friday, met with Mark Ozias and Todd, his administrator, last week as well. So a lot of, a lot of great meetings coming out. I think, you know, I'm going to bounce over and meet with Steve Thieringer this, tomorrow or whatever. Next. So good things. Barb did respond in Teams to me, Vicky, and that workshop apparently is 5:30, 7:30. So it's not all day. So, yeah.
All right. Any other questions before we move on? All right. City Council Committee reports. Anybody have any reports for us? Any updates? Any compelling? Yes.
This will seem long, but we did miss our meeting two weeks ago. So I don't want you to think that nothing happened. On August 13th, I was one of the three council people, or three elected officials that did a performance review for the Clallum County Transit General Manager. And he got a very good review. And on August 16th, I went to the dedication of the all-inclusive playground at the Olympic View Church. It has some wonderful playground equipment. And they got donations from not only their congregation, but parents of disabled children and people in the community. And it's open to all. It's a very nice, and they still have more plans to do, to replacement the surface material and to expand on the playground. But it's a start. And on August 27th, I went to the Chamber of Commerce picnic. And they always do such a good job at promoting the city. I never hear them say anything negative about the city. They're, they have people in their committees from all different organizations and at-large people. And they have such a good participation. They always speak very positively. And the, the Pioneer Park was just beautiful that day. It was. And on August 28th was the actual Transit Committee meeting, which Rachel also goes to. But I will take Rachel's thunder away and tell you that the county's going to get six new buses, five new paratransits. And for the second or third year in a row, our county did not get the grant for the electric bus. But they will keep applying for it. And that's all. Thank you. Oh, yes. And the ridership in Squim is up 73%. It just goes up and they just have to keep sending more vehicles to Squim. So people are really getting on board. I don't know if it's the free fare or just the convenience of having the shuttle come right to your front door. It's working out great. Thank you.
Malia?
Hello? I'm just curious, did they say at the transportation meeting if they were like boosting the amount of employees they had since they were like, they had so many buses coming in?
Yes, they're always looking for drivers. They did pick up a few. There's kind of been this exploit, employee exchange between the mill and the, and the bus people. So when the mill is open, they, they bus, some of the bus drivers go back to the mill and vice versa. So the mill was closed unfortunately for this area. But they have picked up new drivers and they do the training and they have excellent benefits. So if you know anybody who wants to be a bus driver and they can pass all the tests, please send them their way. Thank you.
Thank you. Just wondering.
Was there any talk on the continuation of the free fare that's been a one, was a one-year experiment, is that right?
Not yet. They are going to talk about it at the end of the year to see if it's cost-effective. But especially the $1 to and from Hurricane Ridge, and then you pay for the straight shot. And that's it. Everything else is free. If they had more buses and more drivers, they wanted to actually expand routes. But in Squim, we have the Pingo, which is the interlink. We don't really have a bus that goes and stops every 30 minutes any longer. The interlink replaced that. But they're looking at expanding routes. They started off with the things like free, free fare to the fairgrounds and free fare to certain events. And now for the year of 24, they will reevaluate it at the end of the year and see if they're going to do it again next year. Thank you.
Any other committee updates? Okay. Moving on to our open council discussion section of the agenda and on to the council priorities work plan. We've had a couple work sessions, work sessions on this. And so I was hoping we could adopt it today, if possible. Let's see. All right. Did anybody have any questions? Before we dive in?
I was trying to get back to that, what was shared with us for filling in that one square. I would like it to be a little more specific. I think everything, so many things we do are so vague. I know you don't want to write yourself into a corner, but I would like to see them specifically address pedestrian and bicycle safety, which includes infrastructure changes in the neighborhoods.
I'm open to that. If we could get some verbiage going. I'm also open to, I remember I put something in the number one box for council. I don't know if everybody remembers, but I ended up deciding to take it off, just because the infrastructure section is, it feels so operations-focused, like they have so much of the to-do list. Does that make sense for the infrastructure part? And so like for the council part of the infrastructure, it would basically just be, I mean, this is very vague, but it would be along the lines of just supporting the work that they need to do. But like the city attorney said, that we did need to make that more specific. And so I was open to just taking that off, taking it off the list and just leaving it as is.
It's still being addressed in another It's still being addressed in another area, correct?
What do you mean?
If you take something off. I need to get back to that page.
I, I was just taking
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Yeah. So I was just taking it off of the city council section.
You mean the number one SWAT results?
Yeah. And leaving it for the heavily focused operations side.
Which one? Number one?
Does that make sense? The number one box, the whole box. If we're just looking at the number one, not looking at the next steps part, if we just look at that number one, infrastructure needs to catch up with growth. In my mind, that's very operations-focused.
I might remind the council that the, that the left column, which is numbered, the, the black bold is what you all came up with in your, in your retreat. And that had a majority vote to it. The next steps were just random brainstorming. Everybody was throwing out whatever they wanted on a whiteboard. We caught all those things and captured them in red. But those weren't, you know, unanimous or whatever. I, I think what you primarily want to talk about is the black, because that was the majority. And then I'll just, and I think you've already said this, Rachel, but an empty box is, is, especially under city council is good. Because we're really, when we had our retreat, we tried to say, what can we do to, as a, as a city staff to achieve what council's priorities are? Sometimes we thought, oh, yes, we could do that. But it's probably, we could help them more. So we created the middle green, but you don't need to have anything in there. That was just when we, when we came up with ideas. It was like, yeah, let's partner with them and, and put it under them. But it's not our place to tell you to do things, to give you a work plan. It was just a suggestion. So the green is, you know, you don't need words in there. And you can even take them out if you want. It was just our brainstorming. Does that make sense? Any questions with that layout of the, of the sheet?
I'm good. Vicky?
I think it'd be very easy to say our next steps. We wanted to turn focus from city building, infrastructure to community infrastructure. So our part of that is to look at the budget and make sure that we're implementing the capital improvement projects and the transportation projects in a way that is equitable. And then we've already re-engaged with the lobbyists. So continue engagement with the lobbyists and what is going on in Olympia. I think those are the two things that I see as kind of our action items out of those boxes. I don't know if anybody sees any I don't know if anybody sees anything else.
That is what I was going to say about continuing the engagement with our lobbyists, but, and I, the other point that you brought up is very logical, and I would fully support that also. Thank you.
Can you repeat the first one? Implement CIP and transportation projects?
Yeah, equitably. Make sure they're, ensure they're equitably implemented.
Thank you.
Dan?
Mine is more of a, at the meta-level rather than getting down into it. As we've been working on this and processing and coming back to it, I'm wondering if this is more of a living document plan that we can come back to and think, you know, we, something's come up and we need to add this to our work plan rather than having to get it to a place in some meeting after some discussion, we approve it and then set it down and don't look at it again for a year. My preference, I guess by the way I phrase that, is for the former, and that we, we move forward with a plan that we know we can come back to and talk about without getting bogged down and trying to find the right words tonight, so we can approve it and so on.
Right. And so for transparency, I was hoping to get this at least started to say, like, yes, we want to work on this actively. And then also for full transparency, I was personally hoping that we wouldn't have to look at this again until, unless we wanted to, until we get like any new council members coming in. Okay. Just so everybody's on the same page. Kathy?
I think number one, I like that, turning the focus from city building infrastructure to community infrastructure. And then two through five is the focus of the community infrastructure. Does that make sense? Okay. Thank you.
All right. So I'm just going to go row by row, just so we don't get lost in communications. So is everybody in favor? Can I get a consensus of adding under, in the green column, under proposed city council work plan? Is everybody, or at least have a consensus, of adding, as long as city attorney says it's concise enough for us to follow anyway, implement CIP and transportation projects equitably and continue engagement with lobbyists? I think those are great.
Yes.
Can I get thumbs up? Seeing one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. All right. Let's move on to number two. I'll just go out and say that I really love everything under the council work plan part in the green for the number two row. I'm open to saying, yes, that looks great tonight. Can I get more consensus or any feedback for that? I have a consensus that it looks great. One, two, three, four, five. Okay. Do you have a question, Harmony?
I don't like the way, I don't like the way number three is worded. It just, it's very vague. The capitalize on the Association of Washington Cities and North Olympic Legislative Alliance for Housing Initiatives, I just, it's not, it's not my favorite sentence. I don't like the word capitalized, but I'm sorry. I otherwise think that it's great, and I think that what that, what that specific bullet point is saying is that we would be looking to the, to the great work that those teams are already doing and then bringing, adopting those housing initiatives as housing initiatives that we are in favor of. So I think that's what it says. I just don't like the way it's worded. But that's all. Thank you. I like the box, too.
Is everybody still okay with consensus on that? Okay. Seeing thumbs up. All right. Row three. I'm also good with this one. Can I get a consensus? One, two, three, four, five? Okay. Oh, sorry. I'm going fast. We got a consensus from Kathy. We can now move on. All right. Row number four, capitalize on strengths. I'll give everyone a chance to read it. And I'll jump out and say I'm good with this one, too. I have one, two, three, four, five, six. All righty. This is great, guys. You're just moving right along. All right.
Thank you.
Row number five. Give everyone a second to read it. City Council. Oh, Harmony.
What does the number one specifically stand for? Are there multiple climate elements of the comp plan? We're only adopting the first climate element of the comp plan? I'm just wondering. The presence of the number one. Sorry, Harmony, I didn't mean to interrupt. Purposes of the record, Christina Nelson-Gross, city attorney. I believe I heard Lindsay say that this is the first time that the climate element will be included in comprehensive plans, so this will be the city's first-ever climate element. Excellent. Thank you so much.
And I believe that's why we were able to ask money from the state, and they gave us $50,000 or something. They gave us a pretty decent grant through the climate, because now it's a part of the comp plan. So they supported the comp plan financially. We got two grants from the state. One of them was from, due to climate.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that clarification.
So can I just change the one to first? Just so it's very clear? And do I have a consensus on row five? One, two, three. Okay. All right. Row number six. I really appreciate everybody being so actively engaged. This is great.
This means threatening, threatening state legislative action, right? A threat to Squim? Or is that somebody's shorthand?
In the context of the SWAT analysis, strengths, weakness, opportunities, and threats. Yep, this was listed as a threat.
For clarification, we should not threaten anybody. All right. So row number six, I am really good with that green. One, two, three, four, five, six. Coolio. All right. I mean, I feel like for row number seven, what we can do is stay informed and actively That's what I've got. Agree.
And number seven tied to, and we, in our retreat, we had a hard time creating something new, different than the two above. They were close to what your second priority was, and eight was close to three above. So you'll find some relationships there that...
All right. So for row seven, I'll say, I'll put it out there and say just staying, for the proposed city council, the green column, I will say staying actively engaged and informed. That is what we can do. Consensus for row seven? One, two, three, four, five, six. Cool. And number eight, I'm open to leaving that open. Consensus for row eight? One, two. Sorry, for clarification, leaving it open for the green column and keeping the operations ones, yeah.
Stay engaged with zoning, because that's the only way to stop growth would be zoning. First of all, you have to identify what type of growth it is you do or don't want, and it's all done through zoning, isn't it?
So my reason for leaving it open is because it's so tied to number three, right? Is that the one I'm looking at? They're really closely tied together. Consensus on leaving row eight council box open? Cool. One, two, three, four, five, six. Yeah. Okay. Thank you so much, everybody. Nicole? Yeah?
I just wanted to comment to what Dan said about leaving this as kind of a living document, because I think rather than the danger of setting it to the side and looking at it again in a year, you know, I'd like to print this to make sure, bringing it to the meetings, that it helps guide what we do, since I wasn't present for the development of this, and just use it as kind of a guiding document.
Yeah, that sounds great. I also believe that the next legislative session could, could hopefully tie into a lot of this. Fingers crossed. So having it somewhere that is very close, I think, could be really beneficial. Any other questions or comments before we move on?
Thank you. Thank you, council.
Should I get a motion, you think, to approve this, just so it's on paper?
Well, so the consultant that you hired suggested that you try to adopt this through some form of motion, yeah.
All righty. Could I get a motion to approve the council priorities and work plan as discussed?
Yeah, I would move to adopt the council priorities and work plan as a living document to be reviewed from time to time.
Second that.
Whatever the, what was it, 24, 25? Is that what the date is? In the biennium?
Now I second that.
And could we get a roll call vote, please? Counselor Downer?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Rutter?
Yes.
And Counselor Hartman?
Yes.
Motion passed, 6-0. All right. Next up on open council discussion is the Narcan and Sharps containers. Dan, that's all.
Thank you. Can I get a 30-second recess to get a show and tell out of the closet there? I didn't get it out.
Oh, yes.
I got here too late before maybe started.
Can we get a motion that we have a five-minute recess, actually? Would be nice.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. We are back from our recess, and Dan, if you want to take the next agenda item away.
Thank you. Just a technical thing, we've labeled this, 11B is labeled Narcan and Sharps containers, and we're not pursuing the Sharps containers initiative at this time. So if you read the document that's attached there, you'll recognize that it is focused tonight on the naloxone, Narcan issue. So just a quick summary, I've invited from the Clallum County Health and Human Services Harm Reduction Program, Ms. Siri Forsman-Sims, to be here with us, and will give us a brief presentation on what naloxone is and why it's essential life-saving treatment, and any questions we might have. In the process of preparing for this, I learned that a third of all overdose deaths in Clallum County occur in our zip code. And as we know, our zip code is larger than the city of Squim that we have influence over, but that's somewhat sobering, and that breaks down, you know, there's overdoses from the use of illicit drugs, there's also overdoses for people that get confused on their prescriptions and so on. So there's, the coroner has the details on how those break down, but it's not insignificant. The program that I'm asking that we look into collaborating with is funded by the fund that was established as a result of the litigation with the pharmaceutical companies that intentionally flooded the market with opioids more than a decade ago. And then we know that crisis is more kind of exacerbated by the introduction of fentanyl into our communities over the last several years. One reason why we're not going to focus on Sharps containers at this point is, the good news is that the use of injectable illicit drugs has dropped way off. The bad news is, is because of fentanyl and opioids are taking the place of that. So we have fewer used needles being left around. We have more little foil packets and sadly, and then people of all ages, that's the other thing that's remarkable about the statistics, this isn't just a youth issue. So the deployment of Narcan, naloxone around the county in, this program uses these boxes, which are basically repurposed newspaper boxes. And Ms. Forsman-Sims can tell us how that's gone, where they've been deployed, and what we could expect in our community. The process a little bit ahead of time with Matt, with Chief Hill, Parks and Rec staff, kind of the pros and cons of entering into this collaboration with the county. And so this is the next step, as we discuss this as a council. So I'd like to invite Sims, Forsman-Sims, to come and speak with us. Those of you that have iPhones will want to be careful about calling her by her first name, or all of our phones are going to light up.
It's true. Hi, everybody. I'm Siri Forsman-Sims. I am a 98382 resident, but not in the city of Squim. I live off of one of those racing streets, the corner of West Hendrickson and Priest Road. Anybody wants to come out there and do some mitigation? That'd be great. So I'm the Harm Reduction Health Center Program Coordinator for Health and Human Services. We are located down below Country Air on West Second Street, what used to be the big red CrossFit building, and prior to that, it was a logging company, I understand. It is now the Harm Reduction Health Center. So talking about Narcan today, in our conversation with Dan, and was it Matt? The question came up, what's Narcan? So let's start with some, let's start first with some data, and I apologize, I only brought six printouts. So, but you can see the data for 2023 and 2024 says partial, because it takes months and months, sometimes eight months, to get a confirmed overdose death into our system. The coroner has slightly different numbers, but Dr. Allison Berry and our epidemiologist, Mundan Amajdi, are the ones that determine if it was in fact a Clallum County resident and the death occurred, because the data goes with where the person lived. So if the person lived in, for example, if somebody passes away in Port Angeles, but they're a resident of Jefferson, that death is reported as a Jefferson death, even though it was a death in Port Angeles. So let me pass these out, just so you know, there's the data here, and then there's some graphs on the front and back with accidental overdose deaths by scene location, by drug category, and residents of decedent. So it's about, about 30% overall when we look at all the deaths that are occurring in the 98382 zip code, and they range from young teens to, I think our eldest was 82 in the last couple of years. And it might be illicit drugs. As Dan said, it might be folks using and being confused by their prescription opiates. One of the things that we have here in the city of Squim is a huge number of folks above the age of 65. A lot of them are taking pain medication, a lot of them live alone, and, or, you know, with a spouse that's also older, and they get confused, and it's really valuable for them to have Narcan. I've had people, I've had people drive over to Port Angeles and say, I've heard I can get a naloxone. We have a very active pharmacist at QFC who highly recommends anybody who's given a new pain prescription, that they also get Narcan while they're there. You know, there are people out there that are really trying to get it out into the hands of the folks who are most likely to overdose. That's our biggest concern. Does anybody have a question about that data that they're looking at? Does anybody have a question about that data that they're looking at? If you'll, if you'll notice, there's a chunk of opiate alone, and then there's polysubstance. Typically, in our county, it's methamphetamine with fentanyl. And the reason is because somewhere along the line of the production and the distribution of the illicit substance, fentanyl's cheap, it's being cut in with the meth, which causes the folks using it to need both those drugs now. So they are more likely to come back. There are other substances that I won't go into that are also in this, that are wreaking havoc on our folks, but. So the person that is opiate naive, they've never taken opiates, they're a meth user, they're a stimulant user. They then run the risk of overdosing from the fentanyl typically, because they don't have any tolerance in their system. So that's another issue that we have in this county especially. We also, about a month ago, had our first EUA at Jamestown Healing Clinic that was for carfentanil. And I do know word on the street is there are folks that are using it. But that was the first, like, official announcement that it's here. So we've got, and if you don't know what carfentanil is, it's about 100 times more powerful than fentanyl. 100 times more powerful than heroin, yeah. And the reason folks have quit injecting is because our program is offering injection alternatives, smoking alternatives, which is the issue with the foil. Rectal administration, which people are really uncomfortable with when they hear about it, but it's so much safer than injecting. Snorting kits, so that they're, you know, they're breathing it in instead of injecting. It's been really successful in reducing the number of syringes that are out there. We've probably seen our numbers drop by, I would say, 75% since last summer.
Did you bring the sample?
I did.
Narcan, just to get an idea of what we're talking about.
So opiates, this is a kind of, it sounds like it's going in and out on the microphone. Opiates, opioids, they're, those two terms are used sort of synonymously, but they are drugs that are meant to help you forget about pain, essentially. So the opiate goes into our receptor in our brain, and it sticks there. And it can stick there for hours and hours and hours, depending on the type. So what is Narcan, then? Well, here's a infographic to help you. Narcan can actually go into the brain, remove, kind of boot that opiate out of the brain receptor, and replace it with its little Narcan self, and it will last up to 90 minutes. Which is a great thing, if somebody calls 911 and gets somebody else there after giving them the Narcan. Someone can, depending on how much they've used, they can require multiple doses of Narcan. And they can also re-overdose after 90 minutes is up. So it's super important to get folks into medical care after that happens. I work closely with our community paramedics in Port Angeles, and they're tracking the number of folks that dial 911 versus the number of folks that they trans, for an overdose, versus the number of transports they make to the hospital, and it's about 40%. So we're really working to educate folks that if you've given someone Narcan, stay with them, call 911, and, and make sure that they get transported, because they can re-overdose within that hour and a half. It's currently taking two to three doses of three-milligram Narcan for people to recover from an overdose. Ideally, you don't want to give them too much, because when they come to, they're in instant withdrawal. So depending on how much opiate they have in their system, and how much Narcan they're given, they can be, you know, they're labeled as combative, but, you know, if people are standing around you with their hair on fire, freaking out, and then you come to out of black nothingness, and you feel horrible, because you're in the, you know, ultimate stages of, of withdrawal, you're probably going to be a little combative, or perceived as combative, because you're angry, grumpy, and you just want to get away.
I have a quick question about that, if, if that's okay?
You bet.
So it sounds like there might not be enough, but there could also be too much, right? And so is there a way to know visually that?
Right, so quick, quick Narcan training. When you see somebody who appears to be overdosing, and there are several ways to understand, you're looking for somebody who's not responding to vocal, verbal questions, commands. They typically, if you're lighter skinned, you typically become gray, and your lips go gray, or purple. If you're darker skinned, you might go very, very dark, and your lips typically end up being very dark. It just depends, but you do it a couple tests. Hey, friend, you seem to be overdosing, are you okay? Right, and you're looking, you know, around the area for evidence of use. If they don't respond to that, then you do what's called a chest nuggie, and you run your knuckles up and down their sternum really hard, because it's painful. If you do that to yourself, you'll notice it doesn't feel good. If they don't respond to that, you say, hey, you seem to be overdosing, I'm going to give you Narcan. And if they have any ability to come to, they will, because they don't want to be Narcan. And then you would give them the Narcan. So let me pass around the Narcan that we distribute in the boxes.
And isn't it true that the stronger the fentanyl, the more Narcan? Like, it's, it's, the average now is moving up to two to three. I think you may have said that, but that's kind of the typical, it used to be one for almost everybody, now it's two to three.
Right, and there were some, so the first responders tend to be, especially the police, tend to be loaded up with the injectable Narcan, and it just depends on how much is in the vial. But they were typically taught to just load somebody up with the Narcan, just shoot them with everything you've got, right? Because you're trying to save their lives. Ideally, now, you're only giving one vial of one milligram, or one of those doses, and then you're doing rescue breathing, and you're waiting three minutes. Which is really hard to do in an emergency, to wait three minutes. Is there somebody here nodding? So the, what we're hearing is it's taking three. I don't think everybody's waiting those three minutes, because when, one of the things that is occurring is folks that are using typically are the first responders. It's your buddy that's with you that is going to use the Narcan on you. Whether or not that they are actually waiting the three minutes, don't know. So, were there more questions out there? And did that answer your question, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Did you have a question?
You kind of answered it, so we were, I always taught that you can't actually give somebody too much Narcan, but waiting in between and then continuing, because it eventually dissipates, and it doesn't really hurt them as much as being an overdose. I don't want people to be afraid to not keep giving it. Well, you don't want to, you don't want to give them too much, because that will really antagonize them in the end. What, you do want to be measured and slow, perform rescue breathing every five seconds, and then wait those three minutes. You can't kill them by giving them too much. But it depends on how you define hurt, so if you are causing somebody to come to in the throes of, you know, really bad withdrawal, we'd prefer that not to happen. But it's better than dying, yes, absolutely, yeah. Counselor, Counselor Downer?
Right now, there is no way to track for laypeople how many times Narcan is being given by a layperson, right?
No.
Just by the paramedics?
Current, yes.
Or in the emergency room, or whatever, okay.
Or by the police department.
Right, thank you.
Counselor Rutter?
Where are these distribution stations already in the county? And your, your comment sparked this thought. Do you have an idea of how much Narcan is getting put out into the community at this time?
So currently, we have, I'm responsible for seven existing boxes. We have another box that we're working on at Pensla College, that's a big kiosk that's meant for COVID, flu, and then 50% has to be COVID and flu stuff, and then we can do fentanyl test strips, hyalazine test strips, Narcan, whatever else they request in that box. So that's kind of on the periphery. We're waiting for the Clallam Transit Center has agreed to place one at the Gateway Transit Center, sorry, Clallam County Transit has agreed to place one at the Transit Center. Thank you, Counselor Downer, for your work on that, on that, during that meeting. Well, yeah, so there's those seven. So we start in the west end, we've got one at Mariposa House, they requested it. That's a women's and, women and children's shelter. We have one at our Clallam County Public Health Building on C Street, which is just off the main highway. We have one in Clallam Bay at the Fire Department, they requested it. Northwest End has a really tough time with, with drug use. They are very concerned about their community, and we're actually going to be out there pretty soon on Thursdays doing harm reduction. So it's housed at the Fire Department outside. Then moving in, we have one at Serenity House currently, right at the front door of the shelter. I just met, met with Sharon and some other staffers there today, and they're putting another one at Mahoney Heights, which is another facility close by the shelter, it's their apartment building. They've requested, because they've had a couple overdoses there, and they wanted more Narcan closer, rather than having to have people run back and forth. We have one at our Harm Reduction Health Center on Second, one at Third Street, across from the Safeway, across from the Courthouse. That's the original one. What else? We have one at OPCC at, by the hospital. That was the second one that I placed, and I'm trying to think where I'm, if I've got them all ticked off, I'm not sure. And then we, I know that there is one small box here in Squim at the Olympic, oh, it's a treatment center here, Personal Growth, thank you. That was funded by Salish Behavioral Health, and I don't know how much is going out of there. But we're getting, between the Harm Reduction Health Center active direct service hours and all the boxes across, we're going through about 300 boxes of Narcan per month.
Boxes of Narcan?
Boxes of Narcan, so.
So like boxes full of those?
Yeah, those two doses come in one box. So 600 doses per month.
Thank you.
Are getting into the community. And those, those doses are funded by the Overdose to Action dollars. And we, currently, we've encouraged the DOH, all of the SSPs, the Surge Services Programs around the state, have encouraged them to move to a different producer called Revive, because these ones that you see here are actually produced by the same folks that produced the opioids that caused the problem. And now they're making double, double money. So the DOH is now supplying us with the Revive product, which is basically the same as that, but different packaging, and it's a nonprofit. So the question is, where do folks in Squim think this would, would be a good fit? And I, Dan, did you ever get numbers from the Fire Department and Police Department?
No.
Okay.
In a generalization, I was told that they haven't had overdoses in Squim in the last year and a half.
Yeah, the data contradicts that, so that's why we were wanting to have a conversation, the, anyway.
Well, I'm wondering if it might have been a clarification issue, like when you were talking about, maybe they may have overdosed in PA, but we're residents of here, and maybe that's, like, it's a miscommunication factor, possibly.
Yeah.
Do you know, John, have you heard, are you in on this conversation at all?
Please feel free to talk into the microphone.
You don't have to answer without doing your homework first and coming back.
Deputy Chief John Southern, for the record, there are overdoses in Squim, okay? But the Fire Department does a really good job. We have a small geographic area, a couple square miles. The Fire Department will beat us to an overdose almost every time. And that's why the Police Department doesn't carry Narcan, or police officers, not medics. And our Fire Department does a great job. They also respond outside the county as well, so. Have I seen overdoses? Yes. Have I seen people wake up and be violent after Narcan? Yes. Have I fought people right afterwards? Yes, I have. So that gives you some insight on the Narcan. Our Fire Department does a great job responding to our jurisdiction within the city of Squim.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Is there an area in, is it in the downtown area, or were they responding mostly, or is it all over, do you know?
Elk Creek Department? I've seen it all over in my 17 years of being in law enforcement. It's historically been worse than it is now, because most people Narcan their friends and not call the police or the Fire Department. Even after, several years ago, there's a law that was passed that says if you call the police for drug overdose, those people get in trouble. We do take their drugs if there's any leftover, but they don't get in trouble.
Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
This does fill that, the intent of this is to fill that gap between those that call emergency services and those that are using, in a community of users, and need access to this to save their friends' lives, if that makes sense.
Well, in the transit, in the transit meeting, we were told, and this is secondhand information, that the Harm Reduction Center wanted it at the farmer's market. But we actually have more people per day at Cary Blake Park than we do at a seasonal Saturday morning, you know, farmer's market. So have you, have you guys studied this? Is there any geographical place in Squim that could use a Narcan newspaper stand?
Well, actually, I think we're, I think you're referring to Jenny Opelt's comments about hoping to put, place one at the, the Transit Center here in Squim. And the Clallam County Transit was not in favor of that at all.
The one in Squim?
Yeah, that's.
We voted for it, though.
No, the one, we've, you all voted for the one in PA.
Gateway.
Gateway, that's where, and it still hasn't been placed yet. They're still working on that, so.
Well, I will take care of the matter, then. Who's, but it's transit property, right?
Correct.
The bus stop, okay.
So the question is, where, where do you all think it would be best placed? I can tell you the only issue we've had with the box is there's a little metal shelf halfway up, and then there's one on the bottom. That metal shelf in two of our boxes disappeared in the wintertime, because it makes a great thing to put in your tent and burn sterno on to keep you warm. I'm sure that's where they went. The rest of the boxes have been, you know, untouched. We did also have one incident of graffiti, we know exactly who it was, and they really like us, so they made a little comment on the side, but that's, that's our population that we work with.
The other thing that the, I learned is that the county, because we're currently having quite a surge in COVID in the county, is using a portion of the box for distributing COVID tests to the community. So it'd be another way to get outreach into the community that way.
It's a great way to make sure people can get COVID tests without exposing a whole bunch of other people. without exposing a whole bunch of other people when they go in to get them.
Who would provide the COVID tests?
That's us, Clallum County Public Health.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Rachel and I'll take care of the, bringing it up with the Transit Committee. She's on that committee.
Yeah, I just, I don't know where it's at. You know, I don't know what's going on. That's above my pay grade, so.
Siri and I did spend a little bit of time last week dragging around at different Cary Blake and other places just to get a sense of where there might be strategic places to place it, to place boxes. And we could have multiple boxes, not just looking for one. I was mistaken in my assumption that the Ursula Cell Park that's adjacent to St. Luke's Episcopal Church in, on Fifth Avenue was a city park. It's actually belongs to the church. So that's a private property. And the church is quite happy to put one in there because that's, we know that that's, or adjacent. Some of the warming, the warming center is at St. Luke's in the wintertime and so on. So we, the church will take care of that. It's not a city issue. And this program will supply that. But there are other places that could be quite strategic around where we know that they're, they would be accessible without being, you know, in a place that would be problematic for the, the community or for the users.
And I think Trinity United Methodist is going to put some in their little free pantry.
Oh, that's terrific. Did they have a source for Narcan?
I don't know. I'll ask.
Okay, and then I'll give you my card before I leave so you can connect me with those folks if they need some assistance. This is a, the Narcan distribution boxes are pretty new. So we're still figuring out with the DOH what fund is funding them. But in the meantime, we're just putting it in the hands of people that need it. The whole purpose is to get it into the hands of someone who would possibly overdose or witness an overdose. And that could be Grandma and Grandpa in Sunland, or it could be people that are living on the street.
Well, and just a quick comment. I, I know that there's a lot of stigma.
Yes.
Surrounding this issue. And I'll admit, I'm pretty uncomfortable talking about it. But that's because I'm not as educated as I could be, right? I think education is a great first step.
Yeah.
My whole, I, people at home can't see the data that we're seeing. And so my biggest concern when I'm looking at the data and it says accidental overdose deaths by age. And this was from 2023, where 23 of those accidental overdose deaths were between ages 51 and 70. And so I think it's really important that people become educated, even though they could be very stubborn in their thinking patterns and don't want context or information. It's, I don't know. For me, it was just really important to say that the stereotype that is likely in people's heads that are against this issue are not seeing the data that we are seeing.
Yes. So the Coroner's Office has a great website. And Clallum County Public Health has a communicable diseases. And well, you can, you can go to the state data. The, the other thing that's good to mention is we have the dubious distinction of being number one in the state for overdose deaths in this county. That was, that's current, that's looking like that's current. It was also the true two summers ago. We then dropped down to third, and now we're right back up where we were. So I think it's important for folks to understand that we don't want to be the leader in the state in this, this area. Yeah, Counselor Rutter?
Thank you. I am curious if, at this time, I'm remembering the list of places that you mentioned where there are already naloxone distribution boxes. And I don't remember you saying any doctors' offices or, or healthcare facilities. And.
Just OPCC. That's the, formerly called the Vemo Clinic. It's by the hospital in Port Angeles.
Okay.
They have a small clinic there, dental and doctor clinic.
Very interesting. I find that, I find that that, why that connection isn't more, why there aren't these boxes at doctors' offices troubles me. So I would love to learn. Sounds like you have some thoughts, and thank you.
Because in the hospital, an outpatient setting, Narcan, naloxone is kept in a crash cart. When I was a nurse, it was an ampule, a glass ampule that you had to grab and open and draw up and, and get a doctor's order to give it. So they have it. And they, I don't know if they have the nasal or not because I haven't worked as a nurse since I retired. But they have it inside their offices in their emergency kits.
Oh, sure. But like, I mean, like folks walking in the building and seeing a distribution box that also had COVID test kits and masks and other PPE kind of stuff, like.
I think that the, the approach from the state has been to get it into the hands of those most vulnerable, least likely to have funds to purchase, least likely to have a doctor. So the focus has been on meeting the needs of our most needy folks that are out there.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
I just have a comment. So in terms of what direction, I'm fully in support of an MOU. But do we need a little bit more data from perhaps the Fire Department? It sounds like to, because I mean, we can suggest all day long where might be good sites. But do they have like a heat map?
Yeah, I think that'd be, the data should really drive placement.
Exactly.
Also.
Otherwise, it's just kind of subjective, anecdotal sort of thing.
Or our own perceptions, you know, which may be really wrong. The other thing about that is that you don't want it in a place that's not observed because it could lead to damage to the box. It should be somewhere that's well lit so people can find it, but also to prevent damage to the box. I haven't had that issue, but everything's in a really well, well lit place.
I think, yeah, I was gonna say, just a respect of time. I was hoping to wrap this up by eight. So I'm happy to hand it back to you, Rachel. Thank you very much, sir. It's excellent.
So just personally, I would like to see data from the Fire Department before I, like before we decide where to put something. But I am open to seeing a memorandum of understanding who's paying for it, like making sure this is all black and white, who's paying for it, who's refilling it. But that being said, if I could get that data before approving where it goes, that would be ideal from my perspective.
I do have the opioid settlement budget, but I can't open it on my phone. And I work with DOH and Healthcare Authority, Chris Shira, on that. So I can ask for more information about the funding, too.
Well, especially if the.
It was funded through DOH, and then they ran out of funds. And so they're shifting it to the settlement, the opioid abatement settlement funds.
If the data showed that the need is in locations that are on private property, does that negate the need for an MOU then with the city?
Yeah.
I would think so.
And Rachel, to your point, that was my intention. Is that we start the conversation, we find out with a little deeper dive from staff, whether or not, you know, what the impact of this would be on the city, if any at all, what the collaboration would look like with the county. Get that information, bring that back to another meeting.
Okay, so this was just to start the conversation?
And that's what the, that was what I was hoping. The proposed motion was sort of communicating. But apparently it wasn't understood that way. But clearly, we need, and then how much we lock down as a council as to where these would be placed, or how much we give approval at a higher level to staff, probably parks, recreation, and the county to place them and perhaps even move them as they get experience and so on. But yeah, if the private, if the church, for example, takes one for Ursula Cell, there'll be an MOU between the county and the church. That'll be a different issue. But this is focused on our city public spaces, Cary Blake, Pioneer, possibly, you know, different, different places we might think of that would be accessible, appropriate, and, and get this into the hands of people that might really need it.
My next question is, for the city attorney, likely, I would like to see that information. And I'm betting that that information would need to be solid before we even start drafting an MOU. Is that the case?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. So, Dan, may I request that you gather the information? And we can discuss, hopefully discuss that you'll have it by the next meeting. And then if council is open to having a motion to begin the MOU process, then, does that make sense?
I lost track of the information. What is the information?
So the data from the Fire Department to get, like, to pick a site, who would be paying for it?
$10 million?
Yes. But just so it can be in the packet when we talk about it next. And then who is adminis, like, who is refilling the, the box?
I feel like if this wasn't naloxone, we wouldn't be putting all these barriers in the place. So I want to be mindful that we're not just thinking about the people who would be upset about this, but the people who are vulnerable and are impacted by not having access to naloxone. So I want to like thread that needle.
And I just want information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm happy for that. It feels like that's staff work. I'm happy to do it. But that's what I was suggesting, that we get staff engaged, enter into conversation with county, get that information and bring it back to us. But if your preference would be that, that we do that, I'll, I'll do my best to do, to do that.
Well, I can ask, it, it just felt like a council thing to get the information. But city manager, if you have staff that has availability to gather that, I don't know what.
We've, I've met with Dan a couple of times on this or whatever, and I'm happy to support however we can. I have heard the Fire Chief, our new Fire Chief, speak on this. I meet with him this week again. But I don't know if he's the data guy. But I, what, whatever we can do to help, certainly, why don't we meet afterwards? And, you know, and I'm more than happy to put some resources behind it, whatever you need.
Thank you. And I do, I do want to circle back that I certainly want data. Then the place to get data is from the Fire Department. But we're also talking about addressing a gap between vulnerable people that won't call emergency services and yet still need access to this. So, you know, it's a little, in my mind, it's a little bit like the automatic defibrillators that have been distributed over the last 10 years everywhere. They just, they just are. We don't know where the next person's going to drop down and have a heart attack. But we sure are glad that somebody thought to hang one of those on the wall when that happens. That's that sort of a thing, so.
So when I read this through, and just, just, I'd just like to weigh in on this back and forth conversation here. I don't see how staff can draft a memorandum of understanding with anybody until they collect data. So I feel like I, for one, am okay with the proposed motion in this document that you've prepared, Dan. Because the way I see it, MOU, in order to create that document, there is that research piece, there is that conversation piece, there is that, let's find the subject matter experts who know this, that, and the other thing. And, and then to create that memorandum, we can bring it back to council and have it have some substance to it. It would, it would have, that would be part of the process.
And it's, we're not starting from scratch. The Siri's office has MOU templates that they're entering into with other municipalities and entities. So that's, it won't be difficult to move this forward. And making an initial guess, and they're very portable, they're not locked down. There's two sandbags.
Sure.
They'll go on the bottom of this to keep it from blowing away. So we place them in a variety of places and see what happens and move them around. I mean, that's, we could, we don't need to make it that complicated.
True.
But I would like to get data so that we're making the best possible initial guess as to where it's going to be most useful. And Siri's office knows how to do that.
And I'm sorry, thank you. And then could you remind me, Matt, who, who at the city would be conducting this conversation?
Well, I'm not sure just yet. Hannah's been involved from a parks perspective. Certainly, I have been involved. I may use Marin for a special project like this. I didn't know that you had a template. That will be helpful. Yeah. And then, I don't know how you're going to get the data. A data is going to be on those that call in, right? So you're asking to fill the gap. There, there's a other group or contingency that never, we never hear about. I don't know how you get that data. That's just a non-reported, so it doesn't exist. So I don't, I guess we'll just do what we can with what we can, which is probably Fire Department. Yeah, so.
We even need another one besides the Transit Center.
Yeah, it sounds like three of them are going to be here, Transit Center, St. Luke's, and then Trinity or some other church.
That's in the food pantry, yeah, which is really close to the park.
Oh, so.
Right? I mean, the, that's the next parking lot over.
But we're all, those are all hypotheticals, right? Because the transit, the transit one has been highly contested. And the.
The one for PA passed, so the one for Squim will pass.
Okay.
I didn't realize it didn't, wasn't included. I just have to get it back on the agenda. And twist some arms, and it's not a big deal.
Okay.
And then the one at Trinity, it's, that's private property. If they want to put Narcan in their food pantry, it's not, we don't vote on that. They're doing it out of the, because they care.
Excuse me, Counselor Downer? Do you have your mic on? Okay.
Is this better?
Yes, please.
That's what, I got that comment last time, didn't I?
Can I ask Siri a question? How did you make the decisions where the ones that are currently placed, to put them there?
And, and also, do you keep track of the re, like, which ones are high volume? And I'm, it's one thing to place them there, but then how often are you replacing? What's the restocking or the, you know, the usage rate or something like that?
So Mariposa House has a very low usage rate out in Forks. Our Forks office has a very low usage rate. There's so much stigma in Forks that people have a hard time even walking into our office. It's known as the WIC office. So it's really hard for folks that are using to walk in there, even on our open days, which are Mondays for harm reduction. So that's its own issue. OPCC provides their own Narcan. They have their own funding stream for that. Our public health box at Third Street, across from the courthouse and Safeway, is probably the most active one. Lots of people have been used to going there for decades, you know, to, to get harm reduction supplies. So that's probably the most active one. And we're seeing probably six or eight a day going out of there, and about 15 COVID boxes at this point a day. So, but we don't actually, I'm the data nerd for harm reduction. COVID is not my thing. So COVID is just, you know, we're not really tracking that as closely as Narcan.
And per Counsel Lo's question, I probably interrupted that. But how did you pick those places?
Okay, some of those were requests from, like, OPCC has people that camp there on their property or walk by all the time. They requested it. Of course, the public health offices would have them. Clallum Bay Fire Department requested it. The Fire Chief Bellamy requested that we have it out there. And they don't have a huge usage rate. But we meet the folks every Thursday that are coming in on the bus to a facility from the West End. And we provide harm reduction services at that facility with our mobile unit. So they don't have as much need because we're giving them the Narcan when we see them. What's the other one? Oh, Peninsula College reached out after the new law went into effect for requiring that schools have Narcan on hand. But they don't get any money for it. So it's basically an unfunded mandate. They can have, I think, two per month, which for a college campus, that's not much. So, so it's a variety of different reasons why they chose those. Yes. Thank you.
I just, as I'm processing this issue, something that I think. Um, I just, as in processing this issue, something that I think, so can, are folks that are being given opiate prescriptions, are they given the opportunity to purchase Narcan?
If you get a prescription for opiate, your doctor talks to you about having a prescription for Narcan. So it's up to the person to fill it and if you have coverage or not.
Right. Typically, it's not covered.
So how much is Narcan out of pocket?
I don't know, actually.
Interesting.
That's a great question.
Hmm. I'm seeing someone here in council chambers raising their hand. And do you, do you have, do you know, Vicky? I saw you raising your hand too.
Well, I've always seen it free too. I mean, and then that's, you know, the point. But the doctor's offices are covered, I think is the point that Kathy was trying to make and that I'm trying to make, that this is more of a community thing, right? And so it's, I mean, look at the picture.
Yeah, no, I, it just, it just dawned on me that
I think we're all experiencing some stigma. It's really upsetting me. So I would like to get to the end of this conversation because I think we're just dragging it out. I just think, let's move forward. We could, I moved that we request staff to work on drafting a memorandum of understanding with the Clallam County Health and Human Services regarding the implementation of this program in this city of Squim and bring back to the next regular council meeting as long as they gather the data that goes with it.
I'll second that.
If we haven't got the data, I mean, that's moving pretty quick.
That's what's so long as you've got the data.
I heard you say that.
I heard you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm worried about two weeks from tonight.
All righty, Counselor Downer?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Rutter?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Yes.
Motion passed six zero.
All right. Moving on. So our next agenda planning meeting is, oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah. Is there anything else for open council discussion?
So I did attend the International Opioid Overdose Awareness Day in Port Angeles on the 31st. And it was a really nice event. There was a lot of great resources available and lots of sharing. We walked up to the courthouse and heard some testimony from the, from Mr. Mark Nichols, the prosecutor, and some other people. I had to leave early, but I know that they ended up lighting purple lights up on the pier, which looked really great. And it was a really good event because I don't know anybody that hasn't been impacted by opioids and opioid overdoses. And maybe we have a lot of hurting members in our community, family members. When you lose somebody to something that's, you know, avoidable, that's something that's caused by greed, basically. When you lose your children, I mean, my roommate lost her child to opioids. She was 15, got in a car accident and gone by 21. And that will impact her for the rest of her life. She won't, she's not going to have any grandchildren, you know. So when we come and help support our community members, we are stronger. When we tell people that, you know, how they feel matters, it makes us a better community. So it was just a really lovely event. I hope to do the same thing here in Squim next year, maybe working, partnering with the healing clinic and having like dual events and, because it's a problem here, even if we don't want to admit it. These numbers about the age, I mean, I know when they opened up the clinic up in Anacortes, Stitchwellak Clinic, they were surprised at the age of the people that were coming in with opioid use disorder. It is older people. And so I just, I'm just really proud of what you guys did. And it was a really great event, Siri, and I really enjoyed it. And so again, I'd like to see us do that. Also, October 25th, Serenney House of Clallam County is having their second annual fall fundraiser. It went last year and it was really nice. And if you want more information, I'll share it with Heather. And I hope to see you guys there. Thank you.
Anything else for open council discussion? Kathy?
Of course. Okay, I will speak quickly. The school district is having a large fundraiser on October 26th. It's a sit-down dinner at the Guy Cole Center. And I, I would hope that people here could support it.
What is that again?
October 26th, the school district is having a very large fundraiser.
Is it a dinner?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not the school district. It's Squim Education Foundation.
Okay, then it's the Squim. My email said it's Squim Education Foundation.
They're raising money for teaching grants. Yeah.
Okay. And I just wanted to say, I am so impressed with what, I know Paul's not here, but from when the time, and we've talked about the problems as a council, the problems on West Squim Bay Road before. But when this, the representative from the daycare came and spoke to the mayor, and then we, they spoke to council, and then, I mean, that was really handled quickly in government time. I mean, from the time the problem was officially identified and all the studies were done and the problems being dealt with, honest to gosh, that was very, very quickly met. So I, I was really impressed with how Paul handled that. Also, Brandon and I are working on something and you will be hearing this periodically in the next couple of months. I met, I'm going to guess and say it's about 2017, a retired military, career military, Woody Williams. And he started the Gold Star Family Memorials around the United States. He came to the small town I lived in in Ohio and we have had a Gold Star Memorial. Forks has one, but we don't have any others in this area at this time. And Brandon and I would like to have one. It will not be an official Woody Williams Gold Star Memorial. It will be on a smaller scale because the Gold Star Memorial is a lot of money, just under $100,000. And so, but we are in touch with the Gold Star Moms of the State of Washington. And they believe that the gold, the families that suffer losses of their military family members that died either from Agent Orange or a disease or an injury that they received in the war or suicide, also are Gold Star families. And that Brandon and I feel strongly about that also. So we're going to start collecting money after we talk with, we can borrow the stat, the, what's that, 5013C status from them. But we, we're looking into it now. And when the park was purchased in Squim, that we're going to be calling the McCord Park, one of her, Mrs. McCord's wishes is that part of the park be honor veterans. And I think this is a good way to do it. The VFW has also contacted Brandon and I, and they would like to have a small memorial. So I'm thinking that we need a very small corner of the park, two veterans parking spaces and, you know, some concrete under the memorials and a bench by each one. And it's not going to be, I just think that it may, there may be other veterans groups that would like to help us with this. The VFW said that they would help us. So I will be keeping you posted as we go on. I just think it's about time. I know we have benches and we have plaques throughout the city to honor the veterans, but I think this would be, I cannot imagine being a Gold Star family. It's must, it's such a loss as, as with any veteran. So I'll keep you posted on this. And thank you very much.
Anything else for open council discussion? Okay. Next up is planning. So the next agenda planning meeting is September 17th. Does anybody want to attend that? I'll be there. Okay.
You're not.
Dan's not available.
Vicky.
I'm actually there.
Did you want to, Nicole?
No, I'm out of town.
So Vicky will be attending. And I'm not sure if Brandon will be there. Hopefully. At 2:00 PM. Yeah.
Also. Brandon just texted me, no baby yet. But they're working on it.
Who they?
All right. Our next regular, next regular meeting is the 23rd and we do have a work session that evening at 5:00 PM.
What is the work session?
I forgot.
It's the TIF overview. It's the introduction to what that new mechanism, funding mechanism is.
All right. Thank you, Matt. All right. Any closing statements? If not, I motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All I'm hearing are ayes.
Thank you.